Falls Church City Council, we are calling the meeting to order and ask that the clerk read our virtual notice. Madam Clerk?
Yes, this meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council are present at this meeting through electronic means, and members of the public can view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings and on FCC TV, Cox 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35. Public comments will be accepted virtually, and from those who sign up, will speak via the video platform. To speak on a public hearing item or provide general public comment, you may complete a speaker form at www.fallschurchva.gov-publiccomment before noon on the day of the council meeting. Following submission of the form, you will receive email instructions to join the virtual council meeting. Written public comments, including those regarding public hearing items sent in advance of the meeting, will be accepted at City Clerk at FallsChurchVA.gov, and they will be provided to the City Council daily and summarized and presented during the written comments agenda item.
All right, well, thank you very much for that. Will you continue on to read role, please?
I will. Ms. Conley?
Here.
There she is. Mr. Duncan?
Yes, here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Charter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Sure. All right, let's move to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I don't know, Ms. Mester, we can put up the flag on the screen. Are we able to do that? All right, if not, I'm going to just step away. I've got the flag in my, what's that?
I'm showing the flag up now.
Okay, well, let's all please join and rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's move on now to the receipt of public comment. Would you like to summarize the written comments, please?
Yes, sir. Written comments for this evening regarding the budget. Deborah Z. Roth asked that additional federal funding be used to provide shuttles and parking in the city in support of giving access to services and energy efficiency. Dave Russell asked that additional federal funding be used to lower city taxes. Tina Ehrman of 226 Nolan Street asked that council support the police department by providing the funding requested by the police chief. Jim Coyle, 410 South Maple Avenue, asked that the council consider employing non-sworn personnel to perform community police activities. Jean Gresko of 120 North Fairfax Street asked for additional analysis to help the public understand the tax benefits provided by the recent mixed-use projects and their impact on the tax rate. In other comments, Cricket Moore of 311 Northwest Street asked council to make a greater effort to ensure pedestrian safety on the WNOG trail in light of an injury she sustained and recent experiences she has encountered as a pedestrian on the trail. And from boards and commissions, the Human Services Advisory Council forwarded its review of applications for the Community Services Fund, which provides grants to nonprofit organizations to meet basic needs of low-income, at-risk, disabled, or vulnerable citizens, and asks City Council to include them in the FY 2022 budget. And that was it.
All right, thank you. And I understand we do have a public speaker tonight, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Jean Gresko is here to speak about the budget. I believe he said he would speak now and not wait until the item, public hearing item was called.
All right, well, welcome, sir. Are you with us now?
I am, thank you.
Sure. Please proceed and welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jean Gresko, and I've been a Falls Church resident for 21 years. I've read two interesting things last week, the first being the city's very comprehensive 2022 budget document. Hats off to the city staff on their good work pulling this all together. The second was an article in the Washington Post that indicated Loudoun County is cutting their property tax by five and a half cents, thus achieving the area's lowest 98 cent tax rate. Now, this despite Loudoun County having tremendous growth in their schools, but granted, they also have an even greater growth in their commercial data centers, which more than offsets. Now, we all realize that Falls Church City doesn't have large data centers in its tax base, nor large office complexes enjoyed by Arlington or Fairfax. But due to the great work by the city, this council, and the staff over the last 10 years, we have seen the growth in mixed-use projects and with more on the way. I'd just like to paraphrase the comment made by Councilman Duncan when he asked a few weeks ago, "When will we see those mixed-use projects greatly lowering our tax rate?" Well, the 2022's budget's proposed one-cent reduction is simply not good enough, as our tax rate is still the highest in the state. The 2022 budget document describes all the fine aspirational goals of our city, such as inclusion, walkability, et cetera. But I ask that the City Council also establish a clear goal to constantly reduce our tax rate, and each annual budget should describe concrete actions to achieve that goal. My thanks to the council, staff, and my fellow neighbors for this chance to express my opinions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We greatly appreciate it. Madam Clerk, is there anyone wishing to speak at public comment now? Anyone else?
No, but I did receive an email from Mr. Dave Rifkin regarding sidewalks in Whittier Circle and sidewalk repair. He and also the Whittier Park Homeowners Association are requesting repairs. I did forward that to the council, and I received some, a message from Chris Michelli, who is the Chair of the Whittier Park HOA, requesting more information about how that can happen.
All right, thank you very much. Unless there's any other public comment, let's go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Environmental Sustainability Council Annual Report. So let's go on to that item, and I'm not sure how many folks we have from that, but we are delighted to hear your annual report.
Great, thank you. So, good evening and thanks for the opportunity to provide an update on the Environmental Sustainability Council. My name's Andy Young, and I serve as the Chair. Stacy Evers serves as the Vice Chair. We have nine members and six high school participants. We also consist of three subcommittees: the Education Task Group led by Tina Ho, the Habitat Restoration Task Group led by Amy Crumpton, and finally, the Energy Transition Subcommittee led by John Ward. Take a quick minute to thank Tim Stevens, who's our outgoing ETS Chair, for Tim's contributions to the ESC, the ETS, and environmental sustainability in the city over the last number of years. Kate Walker is the city's Environmental Programs Coordinator and our staff liaison, and we're excited to have Debbie Hiscott as our new City Council Liaison. So real quick, you know, a couple of our 2020 accomplishments. So the ESC continues to be an advocate for and provide input on sustainability for development efforts within the city of Falls Church. We're excited to see the bar raised for sustainability goals on our upcoming projects. You know, the bar now seems to be more along the lines of LEED Gold versus LEED Silver a number of years ago, so I view that as progress. And we'll continue to advocate for more, particularly in the areas of reducing energy use and promoting sustainable practices such as electric vehicles. We successfully worked with the city staff this past year to keep the annual recycling extravaganza and household hazardous waste event. This was held this past October. So this event's crucial for ensuring hazardous waste doesn't get discarded into storm or sewers or in with our regular refuse and recycling, so it's a great, great event for the city. And I'm not reading the report verbatim, so, you know, I hope I haven't kind of like caused too much confusion there, but... So, had an opportunity this year to provide input on the LED streetlight replacement, so really excited about this project. It provides a quick return on investment for the city and, you know, an associated reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And finally, we had an opportunity this past year to provide some input on urban agriculture in the city. So we recently provided a proposal to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board to leverage the recently acquired Fellow's property as both a retreat and community building space as well as a learning hub and showcase for environmental sustainability practices. So looking forward for 2021, want to talk a little bit about kind of, you know, what the ESC views as our goals for 2021 and what we think the city's goals ought to be from a sustainability standpoint. So the recent Metropolitan Washington Council on Governments report showed that greenhouse gas emissions in the city of Falls Church have only been reduced 2% since 2005. You know, so the reduction activities that have gone on in the city over the last, you know, what called it, 13 years, I think the date is from 2018, weren't enough essentially to outpace the growth that we've seen in the city. So the ESC believes the city of Falls Church and its citizens can and should do more to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and we're going to advocate for the following three goals in 2021. So number one, lead by example on energy efficiency. So, you know, we think the city ought to follow on its LED streetlight project with a more aggressive approach to reducing greenhouse gas emissions from city facilities and infrastructure. And there's a number of ways, I think, that we can go about doing that. So one is set a net zero energy target for all city facilities, so both municipal and schools. Two, pursue energy retrofits on all buildings not recently constructed or upgraded. And three, you know, develop a strategy to shift all municipal energy use to renewable energy sources. So these measures are already being pursued by a number of our neighboring jurisdictions, and we think Falls Church should be following suit. So second, we want to continue to increase the use of multimodal transportation solutions. So Falls Church, through its size, density, and public transportation access to the broader Washington metropolitan area, is well-positioned to reduce its dependency on cars for daily activities. The ESC was really excited to see the goal of one mile of protected bike lanes in the most recent City Council work plan, and believes this type of solution offers a number of interconnected benefits for the city of Falls Church. So helps us fight climate change, as we were talking earlier, so fewer trips for daily tasks and commuting, you know, we're lucky to have access to two metro stations here in the city. Helps us better accommodate growth on the horizon, so if you think about all those new residents of West Falls Church, Founders Road, and Broad and Washington all drive into the farmer's market on Saturdays, and I think that paints a good picture. I think it also helps improve the health of our citizens by promoting physical activity, particularly for our kids, you know, how do we make cycle into school easier and safer? And then finally, I think it provides an opportunity to bolster equity by making it more possible to live in Falls Church without the cost of a car for transportation. So the ESC looks forward to partnering with the Citizens Advisory Council on Transportation and other stakeholders in the city of Falls Church to see this vision through to reality. And finally, the third goal is, you know, we want to be preparing for electric vehicles. So the future of transportation is electric, and after years of anticipation, I believe that the transition is upon us. So the city's made notable steps forward with its recent installation of charging stations at City Hall, but there's a number of next steps that I think we need to take. Educating the community on electric vehicle benefits and demystifying the costs and challenges associated with home charger installations. Promoting the installation of chargers in workplace and multifamily locations where demand is from residents is likely ahead of the building owner investments, and I think we've seen this in some of the special exception applications. And finally, and probably most notably, we need to start preparing for a future municipal electric vehicle fleet. You know, and that's going to require some out-year plans for not only replacing vehicles, but also for investing in the charging infrastructure to support them. So we're excited to continue to contribute to the city of Falls Church, and with that, appreciate everybody's support, and I'll take any questions here.
All right, well, thank you so much. That's a very, very good report, and your leadership over this past year, the city just keeps, seeks to continue to advance the ball in environmental matters, as you mentioned, LEED Gold, our new high school, and that's here already, just so many improvements over the past few years, I think are quite remarkable, so our hats off to you and to Stacy and the others on their, on your leadership. We've got a question or a hand raised, two of them it looks like, one is from Miss Hiscott, who'll go first, and then Mr. Lichtenhouse. Debbie?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo my sentiments, echo the sentiments of the mayor, and thank you, Andy, and the whole ESC organization. It's amazing to me in the few short months that I've been able to work with you all to see how much expertise and intelligence lies here in our, just our own Falls Church City borders, and I thank you and the rest of the volunteers for contributing all of your expertise and your knowledge to help make the city a better place, and I look forward to working with you and identifying how we can start to do some budgeting and out-years to address some of these things like the EV and the charging stations, et cetera. And I also want to thank you for recent meetings where we talked about equity, and we talked about, I think this is the ETS, about using LEED, using an organization that works with our elderly, disabled, and low-income families to do energy assessments, and helps provide, you know, everything from light bulbs to a lot more energy-efficient materials free of charge. And that went out, I believe, through Kate Walker and our communications organization recently, but I just want to highlight it again as additional work that the ESC is doing in the areas of providing equity. So, thank you, Andy.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks. Andy, thank you guys for what you do, man. Love the committee and love the work that you guys have contributed over the years, and I know that our lost Councilman Z there would be very pleased of how things have progressed as well. Just one quick question around electric vehicles. We have, as you know, had quite a bit of discussion over the last couple of years related to electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations at some of the projects that we've been considering and approving, and I, for one, even though I work in commercial real estate, have struggled with what is the appropriate number of stations to request as part of our project consideration, you know, and some of these aren't going to be delivered for two or three years, and in some cases even longer than that. So I think it would be helpful for me if at some point, either speaking directly with your subcommittee, the Energy Transition Subcommittee, or just the committee in general, it'd be helpful to get some feedback from you all, academic research, thoughts, or otherwise around, you know, what is the appropriate number of EV stations that we should be considering for certain types of projects? And I know it may vary depending on the use type and the asset mix, but I think that that's something where if we want to continue to lead, that's something that we need to be looking at, because I feel like right now I just don't have good data even personally to be able to make a judgment call, so nothing that you have to respond to tonight, but I just want you to know that's something I'm very interested in in terms of our evaluation of future projects.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hardy, followed by Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Andy, great work on this. I think when we exchanged emails, I kind of mentioned that we needed like an elevator speech of kind of some top things to go after, and so this certainly meets that. It's helpful to kind of think about the areas that we should focus on these buckets. My question's actually for Wyatt and city staff. So as it stands now, we have one person on staff, Kate Walker, who's focused on environment. How are we staffed against this, whether it's people or dollars, like if we wanted to go after all of these things, is our budget reflective of being able to go after these priorities, and if not, what would we recommend?
Thank you for the question. From a staffing perspective, I think everybody on city staff, particularly in public works and in planning, community development planning, are actively involved on these fronts. Kate Walker serves to coordinate the activities of staff and really sort of push us to take more steps, along with her role as the liaison to the ESC. So very often, you know, some of these which require big changes in how we operate, we do look for grants to help us make the transition, and so I think, you know, your question's a broad one. We'd probably have to unpack it and kind of go through example by example. LED is funded, that conversion is funded with local dollars in the current year's budget, just as an example, but I think we'd probably have to go through, you know, each case.
So maybe that would be a good request to follow up then, is, you know, between this and the comp plan, which I think when we made the updates, there was a whole bunch of ideas in the short term, medium term, and long term, is to map that against resources? And is that, and I guess budget season's always a good time to talk about whether we have the right dollars and priorities against these things? So is that something we can get back with, with the ESC on? Because I feel like they're providing us a really good set of recommendations, and it'd be good to be able for us to figure out, you know, which one of these can we take on this year with the current resources we have?
Yeah, and one other area where this can be discussed also is in the context of federal funding, and Cindy is tracking very closely the earmarks process as well as the American Jobs Act, and I think there are going to be lots of opportunities through those federal vehicles for dollars for these, for a lot of these programs, and that also is a pretty detailed discussion, which we were planning to touch on in the budget work session at the end of this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I think you're still muted.
Oh, my apologies. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ross, for that question about EVs. It's a matter of some kind of urgency, because we do have three development projects, you know, pending, and the developers are telling us that as long as infrastructure is there to provide EV later on, their assertion is that the market will basically pay for that for us. So I think it's important for us to know if that's just a good story, or if that really is the case, because obviously if we're not requiring them to do full EVs right now, that's VC money that can be allocated elsewhere. And speaking of allocated elsewhere, green roofs, I was talking with Tim Stevens the other day about green roofs, which are very appealing and popular, and yet we understand, again, from the development community, that unless a building is, you know, concrete and steel, it will not support a full, you know, blown green roof. So I think what I would ask is for guidance on, is there such a thing as a light green roof, you know, is there something that we can do on a building that's basically stick over a concrete podium that, you know, achieves some of the heat island reduction benefits of a traditional green roof, and it doesn't weigh as much? So if the ESC could help us with that, that'd be terrific. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Andy, Dave Snyder, truly, I very much appreciate the work that you and the ESC are doing. There's a lot going on regionally and in Northern Virginia, from the Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Committee, the Climate and Energy Policy Committee, the various Northern Virginia transportation agencies, and there's state legislation as well on transportation and electrification of the fleet. So when you get the chance and you can schedule, I'd love to come and make sure that you know all of those developments and are conversing with them, so we can have the conversation to make sure that things are advancing effectively on the regional level as we can. So it's an offer, Andy, to you and the ESC to meet at a time that works for you. Thanks.
All right, Ms. Hiscott, I see your hand is up. Is that from before, or do you have another comment?
No, it's a follow-up to Ross and Phil's question about EVs. The ETS has actually compiled quite a bit of information. Our last couple of meetings, we've been talking about this, and we've talked about how it would be great to have recommendations to City Council, and they're talking about whether that's a percentage of parking spots you have EV-ready, or, you know, coming up with some general guidelines that would be helpful to us when making these decisions on our latest and greatest development projects. So that information has, we've got quite a bit of research pulled together, and so it's happening, but we'll be reporting back. Just wanted to let you know it was in progress.
All right, thank you very much. I guess just as a final word, I would say I have an interest in seeing how the city could consider an all-electric police vehicle fleet, somewhat like we had the Volvo fleet a few years back, but I think it would really set a marker down for our commitment to environmental sustainability and showing leadership within the region. It would be a visible sign of our values. So I would certainly, at some point, like to hear your all's thoughts on that and how that might be implemented, or whether that's in fact practical or feasible. But given the hour and the many matters we have tonight, I guess I would just say, on behalf of my colleagues, once again, thank you for the great work you're doing. We certainly need your continued involvement and support and leadership with so many things going on here in the city, but thank you again. And unless there's any further comments, let's move on to the report of the Stormwater Task Force. Mr. Shields, is there anyone to do an introduction, or is that, we're just going straight to the task force? We do have Mr. Rolf Anderson, who's going to provide, he's the Chair of the Stormwater Task Force, and he will provide tonight's report. And he, Mr. Bradley, I don't know if you wanted to make any introductory comments, or we'll just turn it straight over to Mr. Anderson.
Just a real quick introductory note, Mr. Shields. I just want to emphasize that this is just a progress update, so this is by no means the full and comprehensive draft or report tonight. This is just going over the four selected projects that the task force has evaluated, scored in the criteria as outlined in the staff report, and that future meetings will address other topics such as possible code updates, recommendations on rates, future fiscal impacts, so on and so forth. So this is just going over the projects, and staff is looking for feedback regarding kind of, I guess, council's opinion of the selected projects. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Anderson.
Well, thank you, and good evening. I'm Rolf Anderson, and I also have Hans Miller with me. We're the Chair, I'm the Chair, and he's the Vice Chair of the Stormwater Task Force. The task force does have seven members on it. Tonight, I'm presenting on the Phase Two Recommendations for Green Infrastructure Projects. Next slide, please. When we started the review of projects, we started with the watershed management plan, and we quickly found we needed to step back and look at the watershed as part of the system, and we weren't just looking at projects in isolation. As such, we needed a framework for putting projects into a larger and more systematic context, and as a result, we developed these three guiding objectives for both stormwater and the green infrastructure projects. That's the, as you see on the slide, increased green infrastructure, improve downstream drainage, or reduce flow and volume near the main watershed. In other words, projects should be dealing with one of these major issues. So looking forward, it's not just about spending money on projects to address pipes here or there, or a particular green infrastructure project, but to make sure that the actions that we take systematically are addressing our stormwater flows, and this is largely about managing the city's impervious and pervious surface areas. We feel that the city is best able to address its stormwater problems through a mix of projects, policy, and community action. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So let's step back for a second and answer the question, why is it, why should the city invest in green infrastructure? Well, it reduces and treats stormwater at its source and it provides other benefits. The problem with storm sewers is they only move water away from the city. Green infrastructure, in contrast, is complementary and can promote urban livability as well as other benefits. And some of the examples of these benefits is, of course, its primary benefit is to slow stormwater runoff velocity. But it also reduces the need to invest in expensive stormwater sewer infrastructure. And it can do other things like help improve the street environment and create park space. It can help support economic development and attract public and private funding. It can help improve pedestrian access and slow traffic, it can be used to slow traffic speeds, as well as importantly, to improve the water quality and help us meet our clean water initiative targets. Next slide, please. So this slide shows two images. On the left is the two watersheds that show you, one watershed flows into Trips Run and the one on the right, the yellow, flows into Four Mile Run. And the image on the right shows solid waste pickups. And this is a proxy for areas that were experiencing flooding and then the solid waste pickups that occurred afterwards. Now, this is an imperfect proxy, but it demonstrates an important concept that it shows water flowing through the watershed and having concentrated impacts downstream on particular areas, neighborhoods. So this highlights the principle that the watershed is a system. Next slide, please. When we did, next slide, please. Next slide.
All right, I'm showing.
Oh, there we go.
Phase one, I think it's just.
I guess I was blanking there. Okay, so this, I wanted to show the phase one project recommendations. And let's step back and review what we did with the first round of projects. In phase one, our projects focused on hard infrastructure and the objective was to achieve the goal of improving downstream drainage. These investments were things like bigger pipes and new inlets and had the goal of moving water away from homes and flood-prone areas. And the standard was to size up to a 10-year flood standard. Well, as you know, overall, the city system is aging and undersized. However, the problem is, is this infrastructure is very expensive and it won't fully solve our flooding problem, especially in events that exceed the 10-year standard. And actually, the city council very astutely recognized this and that hard infrastructure alone wasn't the solution. And that's why they convened us to look at these green infrastructure projects. And so the bottom line is we need both. We need storm sewers to move water away from the city to the creeks. And we also need green infrastructure to slow down water and absorb it in place. And next slide on Phase Two Selection Criteria. So this shows the criteria that we use to select the Phase Two projects. And we began with the same criteria that we used in Phase One, but we redefined the criteria. And detailed definitions are in the report of what each of these, which is contained in each of these criteria. We modified them since we were really assessing a different project goal, and that's to slow and absorb water in place. The principal change is where we added a component on the utilization green infrastructure. And we also used another one that optimized the potential to leverage funding opportunities, particularly state and federal funding sources. Next slide. So these are the four projects so that we ultimately selected North Oak, City Hall, Green Lincoln Ave, and West Broad. We had a three-stage prioritization and selection process. Projects were then selected and ranked by consensus. And I would highlight that the projects addressed the two of the framework goals. They utilized and increased the use of green infrastructure and they also reduced water flows and volume in the watershed. Next slide. This slide shows the project locations for the four projects. So I'm going to give a very quick summary of each of the four projects and the justification for them and more details in the report. North Oak, a street between Broad and Park, has an extremely large amount of impervious area. It's about 80%, it's causing flooding onto Oak Street. It's adjacent to a school and also to commercial areas. And it has a significant potential to utilize green technologies such as permeable pavers, box filters, and bio-retention measures. And improvements in here will reduce and slow runoff downstream into Trips Run. The second project, City Hall, is a very large drainage area, 7.4 acres at the top of the Four Mile Run watershed that affects many homes downstream along West Columbia and Shadow Walk that have experienced a lot of flooding. While some improvements have been completed here already under the prior projects from the watershed management plan, this project encompasses additional green infrastructure improvements such as the ability to demonstrate technologies such as permeable pavement and parking lot infiltration. The third project that was selected is Green Lincoln Ave. This project was not among the original projects identified in the watershed management plan, but it was submitted by residents to the city for consideration. We thought it has significant merit and offers a great opportunity to demonstrate the co-benefits of green infrastructure. These benefits include improving safety through traffic calming, managing stormwater, adding canopy to the city, strengthening the neighborhood feeling, and beautifying the street, all while maintaining the street function. This project also has some other components that are interesting. It demonstrates the need for integrated planning and funding. And this shows how a street improvement project can also have green elements integrated into the design. And it also underscores why longer-term planning and integrated planning between city departments is needed. Because this crosses over several departments that maybe historically wouldn't have worked on a project like this. And this project has runoff to both Four Mile Run and to Trips Run. The fourth project is West Broad, and this is a highly impervious area with excess water flows during storms onto Broad Street. The project will reduce street flooding and its effects on both residences and businesses. It's also at the top of the watershed and the flow goes into Trips Run. And this will benefit homes downhill during storms. And I will take a moment to step back and say that the task force did take an equity focus when looking at the projects and said, you know, a lot of our affordable homes or more affordable homes are in the Trips Run watershed. And they may be adversely impacted by a lot of the flooding that's occurring. And so there's some lens that we ought to be using when we're looking at our projects. And of course, this project also has significant demonstration effect with permeable pavers and bio-retention measures. Next slide. So the task force, aside from identifying the four projects, we felt like we needed to step back and provide the council in the city with some broader recommendations concerning how to advance a green agenda. We believe that these recommendations will help the city over the long term to address our flooding problems. I won't review them all right here. You can find them in the report. But I'll highlight just a couple of ones and that the bottom line is that we need to manage our impervious surface areas and that these measures will help us to do that. In a way, if I were to kind of sum all these recommendations up, it boils down to, we need a long-term plan to more holistically mainstream green infrastructure into city development plans. We need to create a long-term target for impervious surface area. We need to ensure, to integrate planning between different city stakeholders and departments. And that we need to monitor and manage our pervious and impervious surface areas. Next slide. So going full circle, our watershed is a system and we are all part of it. Thank you. And I guess that'd open up to questions.
All right. Thank you very much. That's a very interesting and creative report and your work has been excellent. We're very excited about it. A lot to be looking forward to. I know we've got some questions here. I'm going to open it up to questions right now. First question is from Letty Hardy. Letty?
Hi, Rolf. Thank you very much. Overall, super impressive. I think when we tasked you with the first round, you all delivered some really great recommendations. And we were glad and I'm grateful that you were up for another round of it, especially when we challenged you to take on the green element as well. I'm glad that, first of all, that you guys considered equity because I think that is an important lens and that's something that we're all trying out and doing. So I think that's an important thing to even apply in cases of stormwater. Some specific questions. So for City Hall in particular, beyond, I guess, what was done before my time where we put retention underneath the tennis courts and the City Hall renovation, what are the specific recommendations that you think should be done at City Hall? And maybe that's a good question for also for someone on staff.
Yeah, I do have some answers to that. And I want to pull up my notes here. But basically, it was, there was bio-retention measures. There's also a lot of parking lots that could be made more, either more pervious or put in measures to move the water off and then capture it before it goes into the drains. So it's those types of things.
Okay. And then overall, across these four projects, do you have any early estimates of how much it would cost?
I'd rather get back to you on that. No, I don't think we have a number for that.
Because as we were talking earlier with the ESC and kind of environmental recommendations, like as we look at potential federal funding and the ARPA money, like, I would love to make sure we think about stormwater, especially, you know, not just gray pipes, but green infrastructure ones that are very visible in the community. And again, that's a good example of what other people could do on their private property as potential candidate projects we should consider for federal funding or grants in the future. So it'd be good to have some kind of more, have these projects further along and ready, I guess, if you can get them.
I do want to, I do want to say one thing is that that was what we had in mind when we selected them is that they all were candidates for federal funding. And we looked at them against the federal funding criteria, state funding criteria, in the, working with the city staff. And we said, these are ones that they could potentially submit. So that was definitely in our mind. Hans, did you want to add something?
No, I just want to, Letty, to your point about scaling of projects, one of the reasons we tried to bend this around longer-term thinking about objectives is that, one, it gives you a roadmap and a guidance. So as we try to target funds, we can think about it from those objective lenses. But the other thing is that it allows us to think about this not as large singular projects, but more as a multitude of efforts that both the city and individuals can do to get after these goals. So when we think about the stormwater as a system, everything that can be done on the watershed helps. From an individual's driveway being impervious, lowering the footprint of the impermeable change. It's that collective impact negatively that affects the stormwater flow. So think about it from those broad objectives, then we have that lens over.
I love turning, making sure the accountability is felt collectively, right, for all of us to do collectively, make for greater good. Could we go to that slide at the end that had kind of a list of, beyond the four projects? I think you guys had some other recommendations.
Right.
So out of those, other than the four projects, if you were to say prioritize where you would want city resources to go after, you know, between things like enforcing, it was like maximum impervious limits, doing a tiered fee, I think there are other things kind of on that list or maybe in your report that I remember reading. Are there specific ones you'd call out as, hey, besides the four projects, here's what we recommend city staff to really go after to get going on as soon as possible?
Yeah, I think the things I would say is, is really the city staff needs to come up with a long-term plan for green infrastructure that then integrates with the other city plan. Now, giving an example, we're working on a school or, you know, the roads or you're redoing streets. And so when you're doing those, you should be saying, what green infrastructure do we also include here? It may not add cost, but it will help to reduce our impervious surface area. We certainly need to monitor and manage the impervious surface area. Maybe using a little GIS to start to say, well, you know, is it 40%? Is it 30%? What's the number? Long-term, the ideal number is to get to a 10% impervious surface area number. Now, obviously, we're going to have more surface area than, impervious surface area than that. But because you're captioned in certain ways, you're making our environment act more like natural ecosystem. The two other ones is have a target for that impervious surface area. So we know what we're trying to achieve. And I think that would be the key ones.
Okay. Well, thank you again. It was super impressive and I appreciate you all volunteering your time.
Oh, I did want to, Letty, I did want to add, I didn't mention it, but you know, we also need to maybe strengthen and enforce the city code. There's times where this won't cost us money necessarily, but it's something that we want to be careful about because, you know, how stringent is standard and then, you know, are people, now, the city's been being more and more effective, actually, in recent years in terms of enforcing the existing city codes. But people still find a way kind of around it. There's either, or new developments as well, which maybe we can make the standard more stringent. Because you know what? The taxpayers and the people downstream are all paying the price, right? So.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Thanks a lot. It's very interesting, the systematic approach that you're recommending. I think that's very positive. A couple of questions about the more immediate impacts. Do we have the sense that these projects address the areas where we've seen the most severe flooding? And if so, when and what's, the other question I have is sort of a cost benefit analysis of these different approaches. So let me go back to the first question because there was a lot of severe flooding around Shadow Walk. And I understand that part of what you want to do is address that, at least in the long term, with additional work at City Hall. But are we really addressing the areas that really triggered the most recent interest in this issue? Although I've supported daylighting streams for years, which I think is helpful. But tell me a little bit more about the outcomes to be expected by doing these projects as you've proposed.
I think that's a great question. That's exactly what was in our minds, actually, was by picking these projects which are at the top of the watershed, because the water flows downstream. And a lot of the flooding, like down in Trips Run around the area of West Moreland. And, you know, so the water is flowing or to Sharrow. So the Broad Street and those three projects actually will reduce the water that goes down to that area and thus reduce the, improve the level of flooding. Same thing's true of the City Hall project and as well as the Lincoln Ave project is, City Hall will reduce flooding to Shadow Walk. So I think in the medium term, it's like, let's reduce the water going into those neighborhoods. And we think that, you know, these projects alone will end flooding. That's why we need to have a bigger, more systematic approach to things, but it's a step in the right direction. Your second question was?
Cost benefit analysis.
Right. Great question as well. And that's why we had that criteria, the last of our criteria was a return on investment, which basically said, we looked at these and we had a sense of the cost of the projects. And sometimes we would say, for the impact, is there a return in this case? And I think then on all of our project selection, we have to do that because some projects are just very expensive or they don't have a real impact. So there's a little ROI estimation that we made in selecting these projects.
Okay, so thank you. I certainly want to make sure that we're addressing the areas of the most severe flooding along with other issues. One other question, in our West End proposed development, they're talking about only retaining water from the 10-year storm. Is that really sufficient in this day and age?
I think a couple of things. That's a good question. No, because typically, this 10-year storm is just getting worse and worse. And so, but I think that that might be either the state standard as well as maybe the, there's a cost issue for them. But, you know, they might be able to do, in some cases, they're putting a retention area underneath the building. But they could be doing other things like in their parking lots, having some bio-retention areas instead of just having a lot of concrete. Or the green roof design, if it's an appropriate building. So there are other opportunities for them to do other things. And the thing I worry about, all of these three or four big developments, which I like, I like business coming to the city. I like more building. I like the construction. But I think that we need to be asking our commercial developers to at least explore green options as part of the design, particularly if they're cost-effective, it makes sense. So something that they may not really have put their mind to. Or maybe we push a little bit in terms of the, I forget the term you guys used, but the project requirements or something. Please, you know, give us options on green infrastructure.
Great. Thanks again for all the great work. Much appreciated.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Anderson, I'll add my appreciation and impressive. Mr. Anderson, I'll add my appreciation and uh impressive response to everything that you've done. This is great. This is exactly what we were looking for when we asked for more information and what does it mean to have green infrastructure? And to my knowledge, this is the first time that we've looked at it. Someone in the city has looked at it holistically like this. So I do appreciate that. I looked at your long appendix of all the possible projects too, which are also really interesting. And I know that all of you have put a lot of time and work into those. I'm kind of intrigued too with uh your comments before about uh with development, how that does affect the watershed. And if you look at the project on Oak Street and the project on Broad Street, both of them are next to development. And are there things we could have done when those were built so that we wouldn't be in this situation now and go forward? Just like uh, we mentioned earlier uh in talking with the E S C, what are the things that we need to add to the requirements for developers? So I would appreciate any input you can add to that as well in the future.
Okay. Thank you. You need a response right now? Do you, Mayor Doug?
No, 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 I don't. I don't. It's just, you know, as we as we look at projects, you know, we look at them through lots of different lenses. And we've not, we always consider stormwater, but green infrastructure is not a thing that we've looked at with voluntary concessions or environmental requirements. And I think we should, just as Mr. Snyder just mentioned.
Yeah, great.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep. Well, Hans, I just, just a quick thank you, guys, for all the work that you put into it. Just incredibly pleased with what your committee has put together and honestly couldn't have asked for for a better response. So please just keep up the good work. This helps all of us, especially council and form our decisions.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all again. You've heard it from all of us. Uh, this is some great work and we look forward to hearing more from you going forward. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Let's move on to council requests. Are there any council requests? All right, let's move on to.
Mr. Mayor, very quickly, um, we we've received a number of inquiries about maintenance of sidewalks. And I wondered if we could have a little more work from the city attorney and the city manager as to what are, what is the as a matter of law, whose responsibility it is um to maintain sidewalks and what has been the city practice. Thank you.
All right. I don't know if you have a quick reply or if you'd like to do that later on. If not, Mr. Snyder, that's a later response is acceptable to you?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Hiscott?
Two, um, well, actually, just one, two quick things. One is uh the two of our local businesses, the State Theater and Clarence Downs are looking at coordinating doing an all night grad uh celebration for our George Mason High School graduates. I mean, now the normal years, we'd have something inside all night at the high school and we obviously can't be inside and have such large numbers. So they're looking at doing something and would like to make sure that um we on the city side work with those two small businesses so that they can provide a a safe place for graduation night for the class of 2021. And then secondly, one of the uh comments uh we received, public comments we received earlier regarding um volunteers for police. I also have a question for, um, I happen to know that my father-in-law does this in the state of North Carolina. He's a volunteer every single week, puts in time doing non emergency duties, events, um, you know, D U I checks, all kinds of things like that. And I don't know, and I'm not familiar with any similar organizations in Northern Virginia, and I don't know if that's a a legal or a practical matter that we have not done anything like that. As we're looking at um ways to help support our police department, that's, I thought that was an interesting suggestion and one I've seen work really well in practice in other areas. So those are my two comments for today.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments or requests from council? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. Um, mine is a follow up to the email from Cricket Moore regarding pedestrian safety. And I know for Cricket and for others, this has been an ongoing concern, uh, starting last, prior to last year. But with the pandemic, there were so many more people like using the trail and walking and all over the place. And uh, her concern sometimes is within the city of Falls Church and sometimes outside the city of Falls Church, sometimes on the W N O D trail, other times on sidewalks. And I I'm wondering if there's anything we can do as a city to promote pedestrian safety and sharing the sidewalk. Uh, because it seems like it is a big problem for people who are walkers in more populated areas and only become a bigger problem on our smaller sidewalks. Do we have jurisdiction over the W N O D? Or is that W N O D jurisdiction?
Well, I think it's something we can do in cooperation with the park authority. We in the past have tried, for instance, to put signs up. And the park authority has asked us not to do that, that they are responsible for communicating how they communicate with their park users. I do think that this, yeah, this is something that staff has thought quite a bit about. We do get have accidents on the W N O D frequently. And well, I shouldn't say frequently. Um, we can get statistics on it, but it's always upsetting when they do happen. And particularly with someone who's elderly, it can be um, you know, very difficult. So I I guess we just need to get back with you. The biggest thing that we can do is to separate bicycles from pedestrians. And that is what the dual trails is all about. So I think probably the biggest thing the council did do by adopting the W N O D plan and being taking that enormous initiative and then getting the park authority to implement it. So I think that's the big story. And and the rest of it is communications and trying to work with cyclists in particular to improve safety. Uh, the safety patrols, I think, are an important part of that. Paul Sodder is a member of that or used to be a member of that safety patrol. So we do have a lot of, I think, staff knowledge and insight into this, um, both in our police department, but also with their planning staff and public work staff as well.
Yeah. And I think for um Cricket, it seems like it's beyond the trail, though. It's also sidewalks on West Street, sidewalks. You know, Lincoln Avenue, other places where the sidewalks are narrow and the roads are busy and bikers are on the sidewalks. And I don't know, bikers are allowed to be on the sidewalks.
Yeah, bike code, they are allowed to be on the sidewalks. There is a funny code provision that allows the city manager to ban them in certain areas with lots of signage, uh, which is something we haven't traditionally done, but it is an option that is in the city code.
I wonder if there are any streets where we should do that. We should take a look at, you know, the super busy area along West Street or others to see if there's room for bikers to be in the streets and keep them off sidewalks. I guess it's Northwest Street, not Southwest Street. Just my thought.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Uh, following on Vice Mayor, is there is there a speed limit on the W N O D trail for bicycle?
That'd be a good question for Mr. Stoddard. I don't know the answer to that myself.
I feel like I should know, but I don't. And if there isn't, why don't we set one? And if we set one, why don't we set up a speed camera?
We'll get back with you on that. I know the park authority has lots of policies and they would be the ones who set that policy. But we can get back with you on that.
You know, Mr. Shields, it might be good when the uh park does reopen with the dual trails. If there's a lot of publicity from the city around bike and pedestrian etiquette to go along with whatever the trail does.
That'll also be the case when Founder's Row opens because going to pump a lot of pedestrians and bicyclists into the same space, which I think is good uh in the long run. But yeah, in the short run, it's an educational opportunity.
Ms. Hardy?
Along the same lines, um, I was going to suggest that perhaps the C A C T can help us with bike ped courtesy or etiquette. In the spring, as everyone's out and about more, it'd be just a good public awareness campaign. But I really do think that the gold standard is, you know, let's just get safe places for bikes to be so that they're not on sidewalks. And I think that is dedicated bike lanes. And I think someone mentioned earlier, if we can do a mile of dedicated bike lane, that will in the end help pedestrians too. So they can use sidewalks, bikers are protected from cars, and then we really are multimodal. Wyatt, I'm particularly interested in where we're planning on the mile of protected bike lanes. I think someone mentioned it's in our um council work plan for the next year.
Yeah, we do have a bike master plan. Um, we maybe need to schedule another work session on that. That's a big topic.
Okay.
All right. Unless there's any other council requests, let's move on to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Carter, members of council. Tonight, I would like to just very briefly uh note the latest uh addition of the Falls Church community profile. We've done this now for the past four years and uh this year's edition, of course, is a a documentation of a very um, a big year for the city with uh with the opening of a new high school, with a pandemic, uh, with major capital investments throughout the city and transportation improvements around the city. What the intent of the community profile is, is to provide a snapshot of the city in 2021. The intended audience is uh people, uh, is our existing population because it's a great resource that has useful information about the city in it. But it's also a useful resource for newcomers to the city, to learn about the city, uh, to businesses that are opening in the city, to learn about um uh major things that are happening in the city. And also developers, for those who want to invest in the city, it's a useful resource. I'll just note that the way that the report is organized, it is organized around the city council's adopted vision. And so it starts with uh on the cover page and a notation of that vision statement. Then it provides an overview of the city, just in terms of demographic trends and numbers, um, statistics. And then it goes through developments or new things that have happened in the city. And those are all organ organized around uh those vision and values that are in the adopted comprehensive plan and which are also used to organize the city council's work plan. So uh, tonight, I'm not going to go through this community profile, but I just want to highlight that it has just been published. It is on the city's webpage, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to let people know about this great resource. Uh, Jeff Holleran, on our planning staff, took the lead this year, as he has done in the past, in developing this document and was supported uh by many others in the planning staff and and all of our department directors who helped with uh providing him information to include in this community profile. I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Shields. Mr. Duncan, I see your hands up.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Holleran, for working on this. Uh, so it's published online. If any of us have any comments, the little tweaks, typos, or whatever, we can just submit those whenever. It's not like it's going to go to press and we're going to spend money printing it or something like that. Is that right?
No, if you do have any tweaks like that, please do let us know. And we can make those corrections or whatever the case may be, uh, because it is a a digital document. We do print them out and hand them out, uh, but it's not a major print operation.
Yeah, well, I'll try to, I'll try to get to it pretty quickly. You know, things just typos like Founder's Road, does it or does it not have apostrophe? One of the existential questions of our existence here, uh, and things like that. I just noticed as I went through it, but certainly is a good greatest hits document. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
I I remember when we were working on the 2040 vision statement and the fresh idea that came out of there was to do this regular update. And I remember talking with Mr. Stoddard about it and that he was adding a whole new thing to the work plan. But I think this is a good thing to be able to have to share and to promote our city. And um, like Mr. Duncan, as I went through it, I did find a few typos here and there. So I will do it same as he and and submit them. But I do appreciate the work that went into it and that it is matched to our vision and to the uh, the work plan in such a clear way. I think that's really important. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Shields. Look forward to hearing more uh on this matter, but thank you very much for the update. Uh, unless there's any other comments, let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Would you like to call?
Organized here.
Sure.
Uh, we have um, on the second reading, T R twenty one dash zero five, resolution to amend chapter three of the city of Falls Church's comprehensive plan to add enriching Falls Church Public Art Section of the Community Character Appearance and Design Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. It's actually a public hearing item that is related to the second reading on T O twenty one dash zero three, ordinance to establish an arts and cultural district in the city of Falls Church to include adopted revitalization areas and public land as shown on the map entitled Arts and Cultural District.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Shields.
All right. Well, thank you. And I'll turn this over to Emily Basemore, uh, who's our planner and lead on this item. And we'll just touch on any changes, if any, that have occurred since the council referred this out to boards and commissions. And it is now before you uh for second reading and final consideration. Ms. Basemore?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Shields. Good evening, council. Um, tonight you're requested to hold a public hearing and take final action on T R twenty one dash oh five, um, to add a public art section to the comprehensive plan, um, as well as T O twenty one dash oh three to establish an arts and cultural district. Um, adopting a public art plan is included as a priority in the city council's current two-year work plan. Um, I just wanted to give a brief overview before stating a few changes to the document of kind of the efforts that we've gone through leading up to this point. Um, last year, uh, U V A student consultants helped the city to um create a public art policy. They researched best practices of other cities within Virginia as well as across the country um, and worked with city staff to evaluate our current public art inventory. Um, from there, the city um council went ahead and established that, um, of course, public art is a priority for you all in your work plan. And we have moved forward with this um amendment. On page nine of the staff report, there is a timing section that kind of shows um all the different groups that have seen this draft amendment, um, as well as the map. Uh, they include the Planning Commission, the A A B, um, Architectural Advisory Board, Arts and Humanities Council, uh, Chamber of Commerce, V P S, Historical Commission, the E D A, H A R B, um, and then you guys. Um, here we are at your second public or your second reading, um, and the public hearing for the document. So now I just want to um give a few updates since you guys saw it in your first reading on um March eighth. First, a strategy was added on page seven to establish a registry of local artists in response to council's request um to add language in relation to promoting local artists. Um, in addition to this, language was added on page six to clarify that any public review procedures would only be applicable to art that is publicly funded or funded through a developer contribution. Um, in response to council's question about the broad definition of public art and whether all public art would be subject to review. Um, in addition to this, uh, not highlighted in um these different bullets, but we have an appendix crediting on the student consultants and all of the great work that they did. Uh, many elements of their report can be found in um draft amendment. These include the benefits of public art, the vision statement, and the guiding principles, um, some of the short term actions as well and long term strategies. And then finally, uh, staff recommends adoption of the proposed motions. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on these items during their March seventeenth meeting. The commission voted unanimously to recommend final approval of both items. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to council comments or questions. Anyone from council have any questions? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Basemore, for the update and being responsive to our comments. A question for either you or staff is beyond the, I think it's around 45,000 in operating grants we give out for arts. Do we have other dollars prioritized against public art? Maybe a question for Mr. Shields.
Well, I'll jump in. Um, I don't believe that we do. We've we've tried to um use that program and and have a competitive application process uh for approval of dollars through that program.
So I think it's worth thinking about whether we want to continue using that vehicle or something different because I think the way I understand those dollars being used right now is really for operating of those arts nonprofits. And so specific projects don't get done as a result, other than, you know, side of desk things like that pilot box we did at Little Falls and Park. So if we, you know, want to implement a lot of these recommendations, I think we're going to need to think about dollars against it too.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thanks, Mayor Tarter. Emily, thank you for all of the change to this. I just, I have a couple of questions. One relates to the artist registry, and who's going to do this? Where's it going to live? Who gets on it? Where is it housed? Is this something that should be in this document, or does it belong someplace else? Just seems, if it's going to be the Arts and Humanities Council, is there going to be a listing on the city website of artists? That doesn't seem like something that would normally go on the city website. So I'm just, I'm curious as to how this works and what an artist registry is.
Thank you for your question. Right now, it's just a long-term strategy that we've included in the document. Yes, the Arts and Humanities Council would maintain the registry, and it would basically track different artists that submit, you know, interest in working with the city. These artists could be from Northern Virginia or the DC area, but yes, it would have to be accessible from the city's website, probably from the Arts and Humanities Council page.
Would there be some kind of fee to be involved or some kind of level of quality or? I guess those are all things for the future. I'm just intrigued as to how the city would maintain something like this.
I don't have those specific answers yet. One of our planning commissioners had recommended this idea, and we integrated it into the document, but definitely some food for thought. Thank you.
And then on that same page, you use the term comprised of, but really that should say comprising or composed of. So, yes. And then my last question is, oh, on page nine, you've got that listed dates, and the first date is 2021, but I think it should be 2020.
Thank you.
Yes, but I do appreciate the direction this is going, and I'm glad that we are going to move forward and be able to identify this arts and cultural district. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Unless there are any other questions or comments or public comment, Madam Clerk, I presume there is none?
I received no public comment for the public hearing for either item.
Unless there are any additional comments from council, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt TR 21-05 and TO 21-03.
All right.
Second.
Counsel, I think you need to vote on them separately. Each motion should be voted on separately. Sorry, I tried to note that in the report.
All right. It looks like there's an echo as well. Make sure everyone's got their, their microphone muted unless you're speaking. So let's go ahead and just take an individual motion. Ms. Hardy, did you want to make a motion?
Sure. I will revise my motion to adopt TR 21-05.
All right. Do we have a second on that particular motion?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littkenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shontz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Do we have another motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt TO 21-03.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littkenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shontz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next items. Will you call them all, Madam Clerk?
Yes. And these are public hearings on TO 21-04, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues and Appropriating Funds for Fiscal Year 2022 General Fund, School Operating Funds, School Community Service Fund, School Food Service Fund, Cable Access Fund, Sewer Fund, and Stormwater Fund. We also have a public hearing on TO 21-05, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the FY 2022 to FY 2027 Capital Improvements Program Budget and Appropriating Expenditure and Revenue Funds for the Fiscal Year 2022. Also, a public hearing on TO 21-06, Ordinance Setting the Rate of Tax Levy on Real Estate for the Tax Year 2022 and on personal, personal property, machinery and tools, and all other property segregated by law for local taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for Tax Year 2021. And our final public hearing on these items is TO 21-07, Ordinance to Set the Stormwater Utility Billing Unit Rate in accordance with Chapter 42, Article 7 of the Code of the City of Falls Church.
All right. Thank you very much, and just want to confirm with the city attorney. You had indicated earlier that no disclosures are required at this time. Is that right?
That's correct. No vote will be taken tonight, and the disclosures are already in the minutes, in the record of the minutes from prior meetings, and so they will, they are still in effect. If anyone needs to look at them, they can go back to the minutes or look at the prior meetings, and when it comes time for a vote, they will be restated.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Shields or Ms. Bowa, do you have anything to say?
We do not have a staff report on these items. I will note, we have a work session scheduled later on this evening, where we'll focus on certain aspects of the operating budget, and we'll also talk, just provide our latest update on federal funding, but we don't have a staff report for these items. It's really just for the public, if there are any public comment on them.
All right, and we did hear some earlier, Madam Clerk. Is there any additional public comment?
There is no additional public comment.
Okay. Council comments, you've heard from Mr. Shields. We will be having a work session later this evening that in part will discuss the budget, but is there any council comments that anyone would like to make now, questions or requests? All right, so we will be talking about the budget later this evening. It sounds like we won't be doing a whole lot of that right at the moment. So if there is comments on the budget at this time, I'm going to go to the next item, which is the consent agenda. Are there any requests or move anything from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda? Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the consent items of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the consent agenda. Do I have to say anything else?
At least for me, it will. Do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hardy, you have a second. Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littkenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shontz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will be having a budget, a, I'm sorry, work session shortly. If there are any other business people want to get to before we get to the work session. And let me ask the clerk or the assistant city manager, is there a need for a break? Any regular session of the work session for any reason?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so what I would propose is taking a break around 9:30, even if we're in the middle of a, just to kind of allow people an opportunity to refresh themselves and the like. We can do it now if people would prefer, but otherwise, I guess I would suggest if we're in the middle of one of the matters coming up, to take a break about 9:30. Does that work for folks? All right, I'm going to take that as a yes. Why don't we go ahead then, move on to the work session? And the first item on the work session is the West Falls Church Economic Development Review, Site Plan Review, and it includes urban design fiscal impact analysis. And so, Mr. Shields, is there anything you want to introduce this with?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Our goal tonight is to spend time with council and the development team and planning staff to focus in on two elements, and one is the big sort of area of urban design elements, and that includes place making and architecture and things of that nature. And then secondly, to discuss the fiscal impact analysis, and that is a one-page report that is produced by the city's Economic Development Office. Ms. Whitman is not available tonight. She's away on travel, but Ms. Aubrey and I will give a briefing on the fiscal impact analysis number with Carly in the lead on that. So we do have our development team on the call. Let me turn it first to Carly. If Carly, if you have any introductory comments that you would like to make to set this discussion up, and then hopefully, as we did the last time, we'll try to go through sort of discrete items with respect to urban design, so we can sort of go through things, check them off, and then proceed to the next. And I will note again for the council that all of these have been through your boards and commissions. They've been through the planning commission. They've been through the architectural advisory board. There have been multiple discussions with the school board on design elements and traffic flow and things like that, as we discussed last week, and so I just want to note that again. But we want the council, obviously, to be well-informed on all of these items, and also council is, of course, the final decider on them with, with the vote on the site plan. Ms. Aubrey?
Thank you, counsel and Mr. Shields. So the staff report includes the topics of urban design and fiscal impact, along with references to applicable attachments, and these attachments are relevant plan sheet excerpts from the application submission documents, as well as updated materials provided by Falls Church Gateway Partners and staff-produced materials. And so the urban design discussion will go over the site layout plans, the architectural elevations, landscaping plans, and place making plans, and staff comments on architecture can be found in Attachment 2 on pages six through nine. And then additionally, there is a key staff comment in the report on proposed streetscape. And then, so like, right now, we can turn it over to Falls Church Gateway Partners to walk through the urban design material attachments, and then after which I'll, I will discuss the updated fiscal impact analysis.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and turn it over to our development partners.
Good evening. This is Laura Schonfeld from Hoffman and Associates. We were going to start with the landscape, but I think Gabby, have you been able to join us yet?
I'm right here. Good evening.
Okay, there we go. So Carly, I think this is probably the wrong.
Right now, this is Cindy. I'm having PDF bandwidth issues, so just tell me what attachment you want, and I'll try to get it up momentarily.
We can do this one, or let me look back at the list of attachments.
I believe the layout or the landscaping stuff is Attachment 6.
Yeah, we could start there, or I'm happy to do this one first, either way.
Things are moving very slow. Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to our landscape architect, Gabby, and go ahead and introduce yourself, and then.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Good evening. I'm Gabriela Canamar, Clerk. I am a partner with Land Design. We are the landscape architects for the project, and very excited to be here again with you. We're taking a project through a very incredible journey, and like Mr. Wyatt said, this has been taken through different boards and commissions, so we've been taking their feedback to heart, and so hopefully, this, this will be the last stretch in the process. I will give an overview of what you see in front of you, which is the, and pardon me, I'm going to be looking at the camera, but also I've been looking at my drawing. I have to screen, so I make sure that I cover everything. So this is the overview, the illustrative plan. This is meant to be illustrative, so it's sort of the, quickly pops, you know, you, what's landscape, what's, what's hardscape, what's building, and what's canopy? But it's not with detail enough. The detailed plans are coming up in the next few slides, but I'll park in here for a couple of minutes. As you remember, the project is sort of divided in four major blocks with the, sort of that commons. We've been calling it the commons, which is that Central Park, the Linair Park. In the middle, there runs south, south to north from Route 7. An overview of the project, we have Hickok Road and Route 7, streetscapes. They obey to the streetscape standards for the city of West Falls Church. We have a Mustang Alley, which is an access road through the north side, and it's also bound, it's also sort of flanked by sort of complete streetscapes, a public sidewalk on the south side, and then the shared use path on the north side. The commons is flanked by retail on both sides, and as such, the sort of the sidewalks respond to the design that is going to accommodate the, sort of the retail activity in that spine north-south with that major sort of space in the middle, that is the unifier of the entire project. It's worth mentioning that that spine in the middle is supposed to be a pedestrian-focused environment, even though cars are a part of this, and as such, is universally accessible. We have a curbed condition for the entirety of the project, except for that commons where the entire, you know, from curb to curb on that middle area is a flush condition with all of the elements of design to make a very legible environment for pedestrians and carts to mingle. So those are sort of the big parameters. We have the residential buildings on the blocks, A, B, and C. Well, these are not even labeled. Maybe I can go to that, to the next page, please. This is the southeast corner, Block A, which is a residential building, mixed use, where the grocer is anchored. So we're following the streetscape standards on Hickok and Route 7 with all the landscape and the hardscape. Next, please. To the west of that, and then you see part of the commons on the page right, you'll see Block B, which is also fronts on Route 7. It's the office building and the, sort of that square parking lot. It's the, the entire streetscape section is, it's going to be delivered throughout the entire length of the project, with all of the requirements per the standards. And as we moving north, where there's a cadence of the street trees and the planters, they're basically respond very closely to the, to the guidelines, even though we changed materials. But we, we set it, a goal to establish that same cadence coming in the project, the, sort of the spacing of the trees, the cadence of the urban furnishings and things like that. Next, please. This is the north side of the west, it's Northwest Block, which is the Block C, another residential building, mixed use. You'll see the streetscape on the right. Page right is the one that flanks the retail environment on the commons. Page north is also Mustang Alley, and those are complete, complete streets as far as streetscape, landscaping, and furnishings with, with the sidewalks. I haven't spoken to that, but they range from, on Mustang Alley, from 14 to 18 feet, wide to 20 feet throughout the entire project as a minimum. Next, please. The northeast block, it's another residential building with future expansion for the building D3, and this is as well, again, the Hickok standards on the right, the Mustang Alley, streetscape. Our standards for the streetscape will continue, and then the, on the west end, there will be the drop-off for the building D1, which is the senior living part of the project. The next, please. It's worth sort of mentioning, I think the next one, okay, the commons. This is the two sections on the commons. We have the north side, which is page left, and then the, sort of the next piece, if you can imagine them top to bottom stacked. It's a fairly energized environment. We are proposing, or we explored to have two anchoring kiosks, food and beverage kiosks on the north and the south side to help activate the, so that middle piece. There is a promenade that's sort of meanders back and forth along the entirety of the project, and the notion of that is to be very efficient with the way people sort of move about the space. And the notion of that is to be very efficient with the way people sort of move about the space, rather than being repetitive and sort of doing offsets, which then will give us very little room to provide other amenities like softscape, lawn, places for people to sit and mingle and gather. This promenade is intended to be permeable. So we are committing to a fair amount of square footage of permeable paving in that middle area. We also have an area bottom left, I'm sorry, and the the plant right to the north is an area of softscapes, a lawn space that is meant to be flexible for the day-to-day activity, you know, perhaps nanny with kids in the morning, you know, running around or families in the weekend or even festivals. And we have another part of the presentation to show you how the space can be comfortable for the day-to-day and also for the special events and special events of different sizes and scales. And we like this approach because it allows it to sort of swell up and shrink and make people sort of comfortable at any given time. There's a variety of materials as far as streetscape and landscape, I mean, hardscape and landscape. The trees around the property, we are, just as a quick summary on that, we have a canopy coverage on the side, which is four hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-one square feet. So we have a sixteen point eighty-four percent canopy coverage aimed to be at the twenty-year post-installation. And that was achieved by all of the trees that you see in these exhibits that we've gone through. We are taking advantage of the native trees bonus and all of the trees we're using are native species, as well as a biodiversity sort of approach, which basically means that no more than twenty-five percent of each. Let me rephrase it. Let me rephrase. No more than twenty-five percent of each of the trees can be of the same species. So we've taken it to heart. We think that makes the entire project more vibrant. We have seasons. The approach to landscaping throughout is to take advantage of every plant bed and create a combination of different types of materials. As a way to describe the intensity of these plant beds, we have about a forty-four percent deciduous shrubs, about a twenty-four percent of evergreens and about a thirty-two percent of ornamental grasses. The evergreens and the grasses allow us to have a kind of the backbone of the project, so to speak. And what do I mean by that? It's those are the species that carry the project through the year, including the winter. You know, they're plants that have structure and they have mass and they have interest. And through the all of the rest of the seasons, you'll get your perennials and you'll get your deciduous shrubs, which would then have their seasonality. So that's the way we're weaving in the streetscape and the landscape. As far as stormwater, and I don't, I can remember if the next sheet will go back to the full plan. But I can give a sort of an overview as to what our streetscape stormwater buyer attention planters are. If you don't mind going to the next one. Oh, well, sorry. I'm not going to make you back because I know you have a slow connection. But in general, the commons will have sort of that retail sidewalks to have a buyer attention component pretty much in the entire sort of that perimeter. And then the permeable paper promenade that I described in the middle, it's also committed to have that sort of permeability. Here on the next, sorry, you can go to the next one, is the sort of that little corner. We kind of did a blow up of that. The building A on the northeast corner of that block, there is going to be a potential daycare user. And so we designed the space to have an outdoor space that will satisfy the requirements of the daycare operation with an outdoor play space. The playground, the play space or the play equipment has not been obviously designed because that is obviously to be catered to the tenant. But their space is supposed to function and obey open to the public if possible in weekends or conditions where they can sort of be managed depending on the users. On the bottom of that of the page, you'll see the entrance to the grocer. We have a, I'm pretty sure everybody's familiar with the corner of Hickok and Route seven. It's a tremendous compound grading condition. And we study establishing the right elevation of the grocer finish floor elevation in relationship to the corner to allow for positive drainage, to allow legible access and to allow for sort of not only legible but accessible accessible route onto the main door. There are several utility boxes that are existing to remain, those kind of sort of the circles and the rectangles you see in the bottom left of that graphic. So it's a busy corner, but everything's sort of, it's working. The insert on the page right is the very west end of the frontage on Route seven. And it's right that frontage of the Mary Ellen Henderson sort of parking lot, where we are endeavoring to provide at least a six-foot walking path continuously as a minimum. And then the rest of it, we are kind of shifting the street trees and the bias right at that wedge that remains between the part, the edge of the parking lot and the walking path. And part of that is because there's grading to contend with. So we're kind of making the best of the conditions to provide the street trees in some shade, to create a safe sort of pedestrian connection and then provide some respite from the parking with some landscaping. If you please go to the next. It's worth mentioning that as far as streetscape furnishings, we are pretty much complying with all the standards. And then some, there is location of bicycle racks throughout the property. There's trash cans and trash receptacles throughout the property. Is this the last exhibit of this? So the next one, it can be more illustrative and I can continue to speak to the components of the streetscape. If you don't mind, the next attachment is going to speak about the place making. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, this is the architecture one.
Attachment seven.
Seven is fiscal impact.
Six, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the six was the one that didn't open up. Let me try again while you.
I can speak to all those things that, you know, probably would take a while to zoom in on things. But we are also providing for the community and the new residential community that will be a part of this project, dog relief areas. And we have four locations. They are basically strategically located relatively not in the front main and the front door of all of the lobbies of all of the residential buildings, but nearby. We all know the dogs, the first time they come out of the building, you know, they're trying to find a place. So we're trying to cater to that need. So we do have those locations. There's also a, actually, oh, good, it showed up.
Okay.
We have a little bit of a delay here, too. So I see the place making plan. And this is something you've probably seen before. This is a busy slide and it's a lot to take in. But what I would like to emphasize is there is a strategy for applying a place making lens on all of the components of the public realm. And this is in a way of, you know, creating the stormwater story. I've always said that from the very beginning, there's a stormwater areas. And you see the turquoise areas on the plant specifically for the commons. Some of those are stormwater areas. And we intend to continue to explore stormwater and celebrate that through design of the landscaping. Maybe there are water features that relate to that story and maybe overtly or in an abstract way kind of celebrate that. There are other places like vertical surfaces to all of the buildings. And there's some of them that present opportunities for place making. And so you see a picture here on category eight to the right, that perhaps some of these facades can be treated. There's places for see, smell and touch as far as perhaps the kiosk on the south. We're entertaining the idea of having a maybe a pub jet fountain, you know, fairly discreet, but still sort of pre-dynamic for kids to come and enjoy while patronizing sort of that kiosk. Certainly, the quality and attitude of the furnishings in that commons will evolve to be sort of this dynamic display of place making that will continue to be well orchestrated to provide a comfortable seating, to provide flexibility of seating and to provide sort of that kind of animation that is appealing to people of all ages and visitors and residents and their guests. So this is supposed to give you a little bit of a collage for that. Next, please. Oh, this is when it gets kind of fun. I forgot to mention the bikes. There's a share use path that flanks Route seven is basically on the sidewalk. It's a share use path. So it's pedestrians and bicycles on around Route seven. Coming into the project, now you see the project north is on page right. Making a right onto the commons, that share use path continues, you see that green line. It continues right there, it's really top of curb behind the planter. And then as soon as it's possible, we are transitioning onto like on pavement, so to speak, flush with the commons. And it's a one-way north and one-way south sort of circuit. And that also, that width also accommodates the sort of that fire access, the twenty-foot minimum fire access on both sides of the commons. But we see that as a pre-dynamic space. Just as a way of detail, as you can see from page left, page right, we start with that sort of island. And this is an old illustrative, that island in the middle has increased in size. We've worked with the transportation engineers and the civil engineers to create a solution for that intersection on Route seven that actually works. This was an early illustrative. On kiosk one, hopefully you have a good component of, you know, creating that stormwater story, starting by hopefully with a green roof and some other ways to celebrate stormwater through sculpture and the water feature and other components of that environment. Moving to the east and then the promenade, you'll see this curvilinear sort of pathway that meanders back and forth, taking people through the space. The green in the middle, like I explained before, to be flexible. Street A basically crosses commons and is meant to be mostly pedestrian space. Again, it's supposed to have the flexibility to allow for traffic coming through at certain times of the day of the week and to be closed at certain times. And so that and then access to the project is achieved through the perimeter. So it doesn't quite affect access to the project. It's just changes in circulation as needed. The north side of the commons, which is page right, is the sort of that area. It's mostly hardscape and different materials. The whole idea is that there is more of a family oriented. Maybe there's games. There's a fire feature. Certainly, the kiosk will play a role in activating that north side. And then complementing to the very north end, it's to have it's kind of a cafe zone and animated zone that eventually receives what's going to happen on the north side of the project, which is the Virginia Tech campus. And so that all, both projects speak to each other. So that's the way the project works. When you see the sidewalks on both sides, those tan-colored sort of spaces, you see the buyer attention in a little darker, in a little darker color under the trees. So those are buyer attention planters flanking the commons. So we have a fair amount of buyer attention planters on at ground level, which is fantastic. Next page, please. We're going to go through a series of slides fairly quickly to show you how the space can be quantified and still accommodate different types of events with different, you know, different scales. So if the place in the middle, that street A is closed and the space is utilized north to south from Mustang Alley to kiosk one, that space, as you can see, that's point three eight acres. You can have a festival of some sort or movie night on the lawn. So it's pretty nice and it's amenitized by the kiosk selling, you know, coffee, ice cream, whatever, whatever the food and beverage component comes to be. The next slide will show you how that space can increase. Well, this is concert night, similar in the same half, almost half an acre, same area. It's just movie night, the concert night still can be sort of accommodated in the same area. Next one, please. This one contemplates closures on South Commons, which is page top. If you see the little dotted lines on each end, it's supposed to be closed so that there's food trucks. For example, this one, we call it a food truck rally. Perhaps food trucks come. The street is closed and then now increases to almost an acre, point ninety-five acres in area as far as. And then the circulation still remains the same throughout the project. You can see some tents. You can see some booths, you know, that kind of stuff. The next, the next one would be even more dynamic. So this one is almost one and a half acres when both commons south and commons north are closed to traffic. So again, this one called Battle of the Bands, just imagining how the space may work. So you have a couple of bands, you know, stages and it's long enough to allow for those things to function on their own. And then all of the things that happen in between, pretty animated streetscape. And I think that was the last one. If maybe there was one more. And then, you know, Taste of Falls Church, how cool would it be if this comes here when the entire environment is a part of this, including the restaurateurs and, you know, all of the sort of the visitors and guests of the project in the same manner. So it's almost, it's one point four two acres when it's all utilized, building face to building face, north to south. So we, you know, this is something we celebrate with this design that is a very dynamic, very dynamic space. And some of the photographs, as you see at the bottom, give you the idea of what we've been sort of going through in their exploration process. I think this is the last one, right, for this one? Yes.
Correct.
This is good. Laura, you want to take the next one?
Sure. I think we will just hop back over. I think it was five or four. Hold on.
The layout one?
Yes, it would be four. Yeah, perfect. So I'm going to just run through this really quickly. This is the similar presentation that we've given at the other council work sessions and at planning a little bit more detail than what we discussed at the planning commission last week, just to kind of update the major changes we've made from our first to second SESP submissions. So we'll just quickly flip through. Okay, this is kind of going out Gabby was just talking about with all of the great energy that we're going to have in the commons. This is kind of standing with your back towards that big kiosk she was just looking at and looking straight out towards Route seven. So on your left-hand side, you're seeing the apartment building. On the right, you're seeing a little glimpse of the office. And then to your other, you know, right, if you could kind of turn and see, you'd see the hotel. But this is just showing kind of an evening. We'll have people out and about using the commons in different ways, activating the active retail, all of those pieces. So we think it'll, it'll just feel dynamic and exciting to be part of. Next slide, please. Now we've kind of taken where we were standing and turned around. So the apartment building we were just looking at is kind of behind us now. So now we're looking at the hotel, which will be an extended stay hotel with the condo in the background and another view of, again, the vibrant life at the commons. Next slide. And we're happy to come back to any of these pieces to discuss them in more detail if there are questions. This is just looking at another plan, kind of what Gabby was just showing, but just to remind everyone of the different uses. A one is our approximately four hundred unit apartment building with a grocery store along with other retail on the first floor. Then we have the D two garage north of that, which will be used for the apartments and our senior housing and also retail visitors. It's kind of a general use garage. To the left of that, we have the D one, which will be our senior, senior living building. We'll be developing in partnership that we'll be discussing hopefully in the next month or so, who our partners are for that. Yeah, C one is condo and B two is the hotel. Garage B three is the other garage serving that side. And then B one is the office building. Let's keep going. A second submission, it's basically the same pieces. We've turned them around a little bit. And but basically very little difference between the first and second submission. Let's keep going. One of the major changes we have made in this submission was Commons Lane or Commons Drive that you're seeing, again, it splits the project in half. You're seeing at the north part. Yes, Cindy, I think you get to give the presentation next time. She's pointed out the things on this so many times. So how it meets Route seven and connects to Chestnut. We, again, can go into more detail on this, but through a lot of work with Fairfax County and VDOT and Falls Church, we've determined kind of the best way to slow the traffic on Chestnut and not allow or not encourage on cut-throughs. And that's to kind of create this new intersection that also will line up for commons and allow both sides to stoplight, which doesn't exist now and will make both sides of Route seven more accessible for the businesses that are there. Next slide. A quick look at the retail, which again has changed a little bit in terms of where our conference space that as part of our civic requirement is placed. But otherwise, again, this kind of orangey salmon color you're looking at throughout is our first floor retail. And then the lighter blue that's in the office is now in. And then the lighter blue that's in the office is now in the condo in addition to the lighter blue that's there. And that's our music arts school and then the conference space for the civic portions of the project. Next slide, yes, this is just showing the difference there and a bit of a different lobby configuration on the office. Next slide. This is just going into some changes, architectural changes to the project, go ahead to the next one. The biggest changes were on the A1 building and we're reflecting the comments we got back from various boards and commissions and the council in the first round. I would just, to just bring a little bit more life and dynamism and interesting detail to this building, which is a big challenge because it's a really, really large facade, especially on Route 7. So you can see from the first submission to the second submission, next. We did a better rendering also, so that does just make it feel a little bit more lively and active. But you can see a lot more detailing with different materials, ins and outs. You know, we, and it's going to, going to feel like a couple of old buildings that were kind of grouped together as opposed to just one big monolithic building. So we're excited, we just had a great conversation with staff this last week about the facade changes and bringing a lot of life to all these different facades. Let's go to the next. This, I'm going to actually have Cindy go quickly through the next few. These are a couple of other changes we've made to the facade, tweaking it. This is the other end at Commons and 7, if you can go to the second submission. We've streamlined it a little bit more, so it makes a little bit more sense next to what we just looked at. Yeah, you can keep going. And then the next slide are the first submission elevations. And then if you go to the next slide after that, second submission. And again, just bring a little bit more life and vibrancy, but also making it all make coherent sense together too. Keep going. And these are two, this is the Commons facade and the back facade, yeah. And then, again, you're, you're just seeing a little bit more of how that language is translating throughout. And then another question that came up in the first, came up from the first round of review was when you are coming from Haycock to Route 7 and I, Cindy, I will not make you flip back like 15, 15 slides. But you're coming from Haycock into the Commons. Again, everybody like Gabby talked about knows about that big slope. It's about 27-foot height change. So we experimented with a lot of different ways to make sure that the route was accessible for everybody, even though stairs are required because it was just too steep to create a pedestrian cut-through. Right, so you come through on Haycock, you come past this kind of little park retail area and then you go up either this really great grand staircase that'll have some nice lights and art in it. Or, or you come right to the edge of the staircase and you get on this little blue elevator and go up. And then you kind of meet up at the same point, basically at the, at the top. And this image on the left-hand side, the photo, sorry, on the left-hand side, it shows you kind of the feeling you'll get when you get either right out of the elevator or to the top of the stairs. You have this kind of grand vision, you can see the, see the Commons. And again, you'll feel it'll be an exciting place to be because there'll be great light and architecture and then also art kind of guiding you on your way into the Commons. Let's go to the next one. A few quick looks at the office, and we will actually be introducing our development partner for the office right at the end of this part of the presentation. So we heard all of your feedback and provided that to our partners that are developing this, which is Trammell Crowe. And again, I'll introduce our three, three representatives that are on the phone in a minute, but you can go to the next slide. So again, the first submission, there were just some concerns about making sure that the building felt just dynamic and exciting and a little bit more ins, outs, color. So if you go to the second submission, they were able to create a little bit more patterned geometry and bring in some warmer tones to, to respond to the questions that came up in the first round. Keep going. And then again, looking down, this is kind of looking straight down the road between the office on the left and the hotel on the right with your back to the Commons. You go to the next submission. In the second submission, again, just bringing a little bit more patterning geometry, a little bit more contrasting, warmer colors. And, and yeah, continue, first submission. This was the facade that you would see if you were standing at the hotel, looking at the, the front door of the office. And again, just bringing that language down the street, again, to connect the whole building facade, but still keep it interesting. Next slide. This is the south elevation and again, go to the next one. Responding to requests for just a little bit more geometry, a little bit more in and out, a little bit more patterning to make the facade a bit more interesting. So we, they were able to, to implement that and then keep going. And this is the Commons facade, again, bringing in a little bit more of that color patterning. Go to the next slide. So this would feel was good, a thorough response to the, the comments that came up in the first round. All right, and then of a quick look at the condo, which actually hasn't really changed, but we just want to show a few, few slight differences and go ahead to the next one. Emphasize again the stepping back nature of the building. That was one of the discussions we had with the school, that if such a large, tall building was going to be near the school, they wanted some breathing room. So we were able to actually design the building. We think it's architecturally interesting, works for the project and then also just gives the school a little bit of breathing room with the, with the stepped facade. And the big change we already talked about here, from the first submission, you can go to the second, is just that we've added kind of this blue area, which is bringing the conference area right next to the, the musics or art school. And so they can be used together or separately as kind of a civic, various civic uses in the project. And they're facing the school, so that also makes a lot of sense. And then we're going to just do a very quick look at the parking garages, responding to comments we received in the first round. First submission was just, there's, there's too much concrete, I can't tell where to go in, all of that. Go to the next slide. So we've worked to emphasize where kind of the, the main entrances are with this thin brick, which is represented in this kind of reddish brick color, so it'll punch up those. We're looking at, you know, maybe making the concrete a little bit darker than just your typical gray concrete and then being able to put some art in the middle of this kind of frame that's created by the, the thin brick to again, kind of orient you towards this is where you go, this is what you're looking for. Go to the next one. The east elevation will, let's go to the next slide. This is what you'll see coming off of Haycock. And again, we've emphasized that same entry to the garage with the thin brick and potential art. And then the, the rest of this facade will eventually be covered by a, by a building next to it. Okay, then first submission for the north and south, go to the next one. Again, bringing in that brick to point you to the entrance, allow some emphasis and kind of make these, the pieces that you need to, the places you need to know stand out more. And then you'll see that we brought similar idea to the other garage, Garage B that faces the school. Again, north and south elevation, so these are the two entrances, bringing the brick again to emphasize where you're going and a potential for art above the entrance areas. Then, next. The east elevation is, the hotel totally covers it, so you, you won't actually interact with this. But the west elevation, again, bringing in the, the brick framing. But also we have this central panel area, this whole multi-floor area that we are planning to do, to work with the schools to create a joint art project. Is it different things that are added each year? Is it something the students do? Is it changeable? You know, there are a lot of options for that, but we, because this is the facade facing the school, it'll be a great way to connect them to the, to the project. Let's go to the next.
All right.
I think that's everything. So before we go to the question and answer portion, I just wanted to introduce our three members from Trammell Crowe that are on. And if you guys want to turn on your, your cameras and say hello. We have Eric Fisher, Tom Rathburn, and Ben Shown, who will be the office development team. And we're very excited to, to bring them, to introduce them to everybody here.
All right, well, thank you very much and welcome to our new friends on the development team. Would be delighted to have you with us tonight, look forward to working with you going forward. Why don't we go ahead and up to open it up to questions and comments from council? Anyone in council have any comments? Ms. Hardy?
Hi, thank you Laura and Gabby. After a whole year of being isolated, I can't wait to actually be in this development, especially me, I show all the images of people gathering for music and food again. Couple of comments and then some questions. I love the tree canopy that you're exceeding kind of that 15% goal that we've had staff in the urban forestry advocate for. On the play space, I think I was glad to see that you were developing something for your daycare tenant. And I think you mentioned the potential to open it up to the public. So I would encourage you to do that because that has been a consistent comment we've heard from our Rec and Parks Board that with obviously a lot more residents living in this area, the closest recreation facility in terms of playground will be West End Park, which is many, many blocks away. So other than the fields at the high school, I do think that will be in need here. And so to the extent that you guys can either expand that or at the minimum open it to the public, I do think that will be an important amenity for your residents. Moving on to questions. I think I read either in the staff report or I heard mentioning it about tree planters being combined on the streetscape on both Haycock and Broad. But I think staff generally being okay with that because that was an exception to the streetscape standards. I want to better understand what the impact of that would be. Is it just kind of less access to the other side of the street? Or any pros and cons that we should be concerned about with doing that?
Yeah, and thank you for the opportunity to explain. And we've gone through several sessions and dialogue with the forestry group and everybody. And, you know, we have a, we have a longitudinal slope, which is fairly steep, not super steep, but it's steep enough. We also have, you know, Route 7 is such a, you know, obviously high volume and traffic area. And we do have the expanded sidewalk towards the east side, it's a little wider, to the west side of the project, it's a little narrower because the build, the geometry of the road and the building, they're not necessarily parallel. So we felt that for the sustainability sort of goals of the project, if that was a note, and to mitigate some of these sort of qualities of the environment in that side, you know, that side of the project, that we felt like that double planter just kind of would allow us to create a little more permeable area, a little more buffering, a little more softscape to keep sort of pedestrians sort of safe and, and sort of, not only safe physically, but just the perception of safety, you know, that, that sort of area refuge. So we felt like those because of the scale of the project and the scale of the streetscape, that those were something to explore. And, and that's, and it, without a detriment of anything else, I guess, you know, we wouldn't want to proceed something without, you know, having to let go something else. So we felt like all of the other requirements, the cadence and repetition of the, of the streetlights, the cadence and repetition of the seating and the benches and the trash cans and everything else, still comply. So we felt like, you know, if all of the elements are provided per your standards, that we could explore this, this notion. This project is also, has gone through some evolution and there are some, there's utilities existing to remain and one of them is a gas line right behind the curb on the east block. And so, you know, just trying to figure out exactly where the trees may go and negotiate against sort of, you know, the location of the gas line. And we've kind of felt like the, the double planters will give us more bang for buck in terms of maximizing opportunity.
Okay, that makes sense to me, I think. The buffering, I think, is probably a really good point, especially on busy streets and pretty wide one like Route 7 and Haycock too.
Thank you, considering it being a gateway project, we also, because this is highlighted as a gateway walk to in your plans. And so that alone and intensity of the project is kind of felt like it was adequate and commensurate with this gate.
My second question's around the Haycock entrance. So I know that obviously the front door of this project feels like the Commons entrance, right, right off 7. But I feel like when we've talked about connectivity, especially to the federal project across the street and long-term what we envision the site, I want to make sure the Haycock side also gets enough love. And I liked a lot of the images you showed, but I wonder whether there's more that we can do that makes it feel more of like a welcome place that you want to go rather than just go through. Because I like the images where we showed, you know, having art and leading you through, whether you're pedestrian or the elevator. But whether it's the use of landscaping or benches potentially to make it more plaza feeling that you want to enter, kind of lures you in and then you can choose, do you want to take the elevator or then do you want to go up the stairs?
Yes, do you mind Cindy going to page 5 on that attachment? I see that the northeast block, page 5, that will give us that block. So I can talk to Letty a little bit about it. I think, well, building D3 is future and is right now is just depicted as a dash line. I guess once we understand better where, and this is, I mean Laura, you can speak to that as well. But the streetscape, you know, right now we have that, is consistent on Haycock as far as the, the quality and cadence of the trees and the furnishings along Haycock. And then turning sort of left on Mustang Alley as far as being more celebratory, I guess all of a sudden changes of typology. Obviously, we leave the streetscape standards and we start our own sort of project standard, so to speak. I think there's two or three things, I mean, without really knowing the architecture of the building at this point and whether the built-to-line will be that corner, it's, it's, it's hard to visualize, but your point's well taken. We tried to at least find Mustang Alley, first of all, a complete street. So there's street trees on both sides, there's sort of that same cadence, you know, you have Majestics. And those, those are going to be, by the way, we have American Elms, Princeton, which are going to be beautiful in a few years. And the whole idea is that you have this fabulous streetscape under a canopy that hopefully will just go over straight for a portion of it. So there are elements that we're planting the seed, literally also too, you know, planting the seed for something to achieve sort of great success in the future. But I think the architecture of that corner will play a role into what you're, what you're, what you're saying. And I guess that's being a future development, I guess we're still a little bit of a unknown. Laura, do you, do you want to elaborate on that?
Well, I think Gabby, you're, she's, Letty, you're also asking about kind of the experience beyond at Mustang, but also at C. If you, Cindy, can you zoom in there a little bit? I don't know if that's possible.
The corner?
Kind of the experience of, of coming from Haycock and see the south side of the new, new, the future building. So yeah, if you can move the hand down, oh, that was okay. Other, others to the
Page right, there you go. I know it's a little laggy.
Okay, yeah, thank you Cindy so much. Thank you for driving. Yeah, so looking at that space, Letty, I think that's what you were also asking about, right? How can we make that feel active?
Yeah, no, I loved the tree-lined part of Mustang Alley. But I think when we talked about the pedestrian crossing kind of aligning to there, right?
I misunderstood and I apologize, so
No, no, but I think it's, I think it's a good comment, Gabby, that you were talking about Mustang Alley is how we're kind of bringing some of those same ideas into this smaller street and what the experience will, will be like, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
You're sure, well, what, no, if you see that entrance towards those grand stairs that Laura described on, in the middle of that block, you know, just by moving, making that move, because we studied that little playground to be an exact rectangle. If you think in offsets and offsets eventually, and then you get to this very long way to get into the staircase. And quite frankly, if we don't have an adequate light and the, and the urban design is not there, that staircase, it's, it could be a very non-inviting, you know, non-inviting, you know, sort of place. By creating a bit of a, an open funnel towards Haycock where there's a deflection in the line, we are providing that little sort of, if you can, this is the only graphic that we have to show that, if you don't, if you can stay on that one Cindy. Create, open it up so that there's more sort of an invitation to come and through. There's a grove, we're preparing, the smaller trees, it's kind of a grove of ornamentals, like a, like a very airy thorn, thornless honey locust is what we have in mind. Hopefully we can do an uplift trees, there will be a sort of a bench or a place to sit on the other side. Adequate lighting, it's a wider sidewalk, so people can see that staircase from, you know, from afar. And that becomes, you know, sort of that portal. And so there are two or three moves that we've done to the plan to create, you know, a sort of an inviting piece. The rest of it will come with lighting, with the architecture, with the, with the art pieces that Laura was talking about and to sort of connect dots. So hopefully those two, you know, few elements start to kind of tell that story. But there's, obviously there's more that, that this plan shows and
Right, and I think to Letty's point, we haven't decided all the furniture and where everything will go. So I think the idea is we continue to develop this area through our placemaking plan and continue to refine the, the landscaping. You know, there is some opportunity to figure out where little pockets of kind of seating would make sense. Or again, I think with this kind of funnel, it's kind of bring you into what's still going to be a grand staircase, you know, and even having a water space that's taking you into that. It will feel an inviting plaza, you know, if you, if you want to still be able to enjoy trees, enjoy the view, but also maybe be a little bit separated from, from the Commons. So I think we, we agree with your comment and plan to incorporate that. commons. So I think we, we agree with your comment and plan to incorporate that in as we continue to refine.
Yeah, right. Because I think the idea is, we don't want pedestrians to walk all the way to Commons, as they feel like this is another entrance in, so like another front door to the development, if they're coming, for example, from Giant Next Door. So maybe some sort of image that shows, you know, if you're a pedestrian there, what that experience would look like would be helpful, so.
Yeah, and I think we, we are still working on what the final detailed answer will be to that, combining again, because you have architecture, so you have opportunity kind of for, for art going up beyond just overview in that, in that space. So.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, I'm sticking with the tree pit question. Remind me again, the beds, the tree pits themselves, I mean, aside from the trees, what other type of landscaping's there? I mean, is it ornamental grasses? Are you guys doing perennials, annuals? What's, what's the overall landscape plan there? Can you remind me?
Yeah, the overall landscape is pretty varied. Like I said before, and I actually make sure that I understood my numbers, but we have about 44%, 40, 45% deciduous shrubs with seasonality. I mean, and they're all, or the majority, if not all of them, are natives. A 24% of evergreen shrubs. We like evergreens in the streetscapes because it is resilient shrub of the, of commercial environment. I mean, in the winter, they give structure, rather than perennials that go dormant. And then we just have sea of mulch. That's not our practice. I think we like, we are presenting a project that will have seasons, that will have ground cover the entire year. And there's that energy and sort of excitement that comes through, that the seasons where all the layers start to sort of happen, you know, through the, through the different, whether it's flowering, or, or, or fall color, or other qualities of the plants. We also are relying on a fair amount of ornamental grasses, it's a 30%, or there about, ornamental grasses of different types, because they give you sort of that winter sort of coverage with texture that evergreens don't give. They're also friendly to birds, and create, you know, well, like corridors, and, you know, as small, as big as the planters are, as, you know, by sheer quantity throughout the space, they can be very, very vibrant. And, you know, just the textures alone, and then combine in different qualities of all of the, of all of the types that we have. There is a fair amount of perennials, too. Some of them in the form of bulbs, and some of them are just, just straight on perennials. We have a very good plan in that, and this for a landscape architect, our main sort of streets are north-south. So you got, it's like the most even sun exposure, you get like, you know, the morning sun or the afternoon sun, and then high noon, which allows those streetscapes to be, to be very vibrant. And then you have some of the east-west, which are a little more challenging on the south side, because you get the sunny, the sunny side and the shady side. So paying close attention to the microclimate and make sure that selections are appropriate.
Great. And then, thank you for that Gabriella, I appreciate it. And Laura, just for, because this question's come up, and I'll, I'll actually ask the same question as it relates to the programming. But could you explain to folks that, that are listening and following this project, how it works in terms of managing the landscaping throughout the life of the project, even if certain pieces trade hands, and you've got different management companies? Can you explain how the mechanics of that work with the overall project, so folks feel comfortable that everything that Gabriella has laid out will continue to be maintained throughout the life?
Right. So the, the site will be run by a site association, which will hire a management company that will run, that will empty the trash and clean the streets and keep the landscaping, keep the landscaping vibrant and changed, and all of, all of that to keep the vision that Gabby was just discussing alive. And all of the buildings kind of pay into and kind of run the, the association together. They get to determine how, how the budget is spent and things like that. So it's in everybody's best interest to keep the space vibrant, so people want to come live there, shop there, work there. And that's, that's really how you make sure that the vision that goes in place at the beginning continues throughout.
Right. And so that, that applies to the programming that, that you all laid out as well, which I thought, you know, you hit a couple of great high points in terms of community benefit. But I just, I want to make it abundantly clear for folks that are listening, that the landscaping, the maintenance of that, the programming for some of the community benefit and entertainment pieces that you're talking about, those are things that are funded by the project, the building owners, the management company, the site association, that is all funded and managed by you all now, but whoever ultimately ends up owning these pieces at some point in the future. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then some of the, the different events that Gabby was discussing, like Taste of Falls Church, or other farmers markets, or things that may be run by the city or outside groups, could be done in conjunction with.
Correct, okay.
Within that space.
Okay, just a couple of the quick points about the architectural design. I, I like what you guys have done. And I think we've already seen some of that specifically in the Haycock and Broad component. I think that it's just, it's a great evolution from where it was originally.
Yeah, if you can go down.
I mean, you guys don't have to go to it, I'm just making general comments.
Great.
I do appreciate the effort on updating the design of the office, and I've been fairly critical of that. So I do appreciate the evolution of that design. I mean, I would continue to challenge you guys and Trammell Crow to, to dig even deeper. I just, I feel very strongly that that office component, given the visibility off of Broad, and the fact that, you know, kids, you know, walking out of school and folks walking down Broad Street, it's going to be very prominently displayed for us and for you all to, to try to be as creative as possible, making that as dynamic of an office building as, as we possibly can, because we all know it's a challenge to lease office space in general. And I will say that although I have not met the folks with Trammell Crow, I think that's just a great addition to the project. They've just got a really great reputation in the market. And I think that that's a huge win for you all, and for Falls Church City to bring in just a really solid institutional player like, like Trammell Crow into this. And it makes me feel much better about the prospects of office leasing in that particular market, because frankly, I don't think that they would have taken it on if they didn't feel as strongly as well. And then the last thing I'll, I'll leave you with is the condo, or I'm sorry, condo project, I've liked that design from the beginning, so thank you. The garage, that's the last question I had. The garage facade, so I appreciate the addition of the masonry. I do, I do think it breaks it up and helps with understanding ingress, egress. Remind me again, were there press, there were precedent images at some point related to murals, art application, potential, potential live kind of green wall landscaped walls along that. What's the plan for applications on the side of those garages?
So we are still determining exactly what type of art or plantings will be there. The point, I think, of the, creating these brick frames are kind of centering where the art would be, except on the, the school facade, where that would be a kind of a full facade, again, project in cooperation with the school. But the, we then are going to try to focus the art more in other areas, kind of within the brick frames. Because that's really what people are going to be experiencing when they're driving in, looking for where they, where they are going to park, or where they've left their car.
Great. Well, Laura, I'll hold you guys to that. I, that's another thing that I think in some cases can be overlooked. And I know we've talked about it, but I think that's just an incredibly important part, especially given the fact that, you know, our school's back up to this. And as you heard earlier, arts and humanities here in Falls Church are incredibly important. And when you have kids that are walking by, standing at these concrete structures, I mean, we had, just have the ability, that's just a huge blank canvas, and to do some things that are inspirational, but just liven up the project. And, you know, it's just, it's a small gesture, but it's something that I think is really, really important for the community. So I would ask that you guys think about what type of art application we can put on those parking garages to turn them into, into kind of a living, breathing building, as opposed to just a place where folks park automobiles. So thank you guys for the presentation.
We appreciate that. And we are working with staff right now on the voluntary concessions about how the art, feedback will be given by, by Falls Church about the art choices that are being made. So we're very excited to, to do, that's definitely a fun part of this. Okay.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to our friends from Trammell Crow. We hope to hear more from you in another meeting about your plans for this office building. I agree with Mr. Lichtenhouse, we're very excited to have you onboard. The one question that I have relates to the hotel. And of course, as you know, I'm a big fan of this project, it's going to be terrific, transformational, all good things. It is, however, a true fact that at some point in the development of the idea of this project, we'd hoped that we would have a full-service conference hotel at this location. Understand that the market, you know, apparently will just not support that, particularly in the last year. But I'm wondering, you know, is there any way that the hotel, thank you for popping it up there, can be described as, you know, having some urban design elements or components that would make it at least potentially useful for outdoor events around it? I assume that the building itself is not going to support, you know, a conference center of any real size. But I just wondered if you have any thoughts about how to activate that hotel and to make it something a little bigger, I mean, in a, in a, in a use sense, than just a extended stay hotel, which will be fine, don't get me wrong. But any thoughts about, you know, how it fits in, how, how that area around the hotel could, could become bigger than just, you know, the sidewalk in front of an extended stay hotel?
Well, I think one of the design decisions we've actually made that's a bit off the brand standard is to try to have just a very small lobby to the hotel on the first floor to allow the retail to really expand and take up. We're looking at two to three to four, you know, potential large retail spaces, hopefully something like restaurant, coffee shop, things like that. So I think the first floor is going to feel really energized. And then the smaller lobby on the first floor, again, to allow as much retail presence at street level as possible, goes to a second floor, very large, kind of typical what you've seen in hotel lobbies, kind of even before COVID, which is, there are different, there are some spaces to sit at a table, but there's also kind of some communal, communal table areas and different areas to work and things like that. So even for a hotel guest, even though it's an extended stay hotel, it's going to feel kind of like a modern urban hotel lobby where people can come work for part of the day, they don't just have to go in their room. So it's not, so I think that that modern, bright, you know, very light-filled lobby is, on that second floor is going to be great, to give that feeling you're talking about. And then the real, the really vibrant life, and walking out right into the commons will, will also take care of that. So, and that's why, you know, we have these various areas for cafe zones. And as we've seen in the last year, you know, people will eat outside, people love to be outside, I think, a lot more than they may have realized. So I think that's going to bring a lot of transparency around the building also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Connelly?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. I just have one quick question, which is far down in the weeds, and it relates to the streetscape along Broad Street, where you said you were following the city's streetscape standards. And then Ms. Hardy had asked about different sizes of planters. My question is about the material that's going to be used there. Is that set to be brick? And do we have, I guess I have some concerns that the brick, because that's such a hill, is it smart to put brick right there? Or would it be better to put something that's a little less slippery, safer?
That's a, that's a good question. We are following the standard, and it's, it's a brick standard. It's actually listed, well, the page 15 on the streets of standards refers to the planters themselves, and then you have a page before that or after where the actual material. So it is brick. It is installed on a concrete base, so it should be fairly firm, and should, you know, mitigate the challenge of the slope. Now, the brick itself, you know, it does have qualities to it that do, that do comply with the sort of slipperiness coefficients to be acceptable for public use. So from that perspective, I think we're kind of basically abiding by the standards, you know. And, and from, from my end, you know, it's just making it safe, so that there is a, a level, pristine surface, so that there is no tripping hazards. So the subsurface plays a role in what, you know, in delivering a walkable, safe.
Right. That's, that's really good, and I appreciate that. I guess my larger concern is around the city, we have done that in some areas in front of other new buildings. And over time, that level surface isn't level anymore, and it gets dangerous. And I'm just wondering if there's any thought from staff that we deviate from that standard at all in this area? Because of the slope in particular, and because the busyness of Route 7 right next to that slope.
Anybody from staff?
Jim Snyder, do you have a question, a comment?
Yeah, I think, I think the key thing on brick sidewalks is having the proper subbase, which clearly this is going to have the proper coefficient of, of, so that feet don't slip. The, the brick has to have a certain pattern on it that is not slippery, and proper maintenance. The good thing here is that this whole area will be maintained by this development. And if properly maintained, brick is actually very easy to, to fix if you have a small piece that comes up or comes loose. It's, it's just a question of keeping on it. I know we go throughout the city and we grind down sidewalks periodically, where large pieces of concrete have been tripped up, and we go through annual grinding. So I think it's, I think it's part of the important brand of the city, letting people know that this part of Route 7 is in fact Falls Church. And I think it's an attractive feature for the city, consistent with the rest of Broad Street. Now, the other side of, of, of Route 7, not Broad Street, but Route 7 and Fairfax, the standard there is, is a, is a concrete walkway. So those are kind of the options. But I think being consistent with the Route 7 frontage, in terms of materials, an important way to connect it with the rest of the city. And if properly maintained, particularly during the seasonal events of rain and snow, which a project like this will be, I think, I think the city will be, and the residents and the users will be in good shape.
Okay. So Jim, my specific question relates to the, like outside of Harris Teeter, the area that where cars drive over, where it's brick, we walk, that is in terrible shape. And so will the driveways also be brick here?
The, that's a question for the developer, I don't know for certain. In here, the case of Harris Teeter, we did not, that was not done where the developer has to maintain those themselves. We've done that on Lincoln and other projects. So that is something we'll have to work with them to repair that, have that repaired. And where you have a driveway, you need additional depth of, of concrete, and you actually need a thicker paver to go over the, where you have heavy, heavy driveway access. But I would believe the access from Route 7 would not have, you're going to have a driveway access through there that would not have brick on it. Am I correct on that?
I am verifying it right now. I think we are...
I believe the crosswalk's going over, like, they are brick. It is a different type of brick that's specified in the standards for those areas that are supposed to be able to withstand heavier traffic.
Thanks, Carly. Yes, I just found my drawing here, it's confirming that.
I, I do not know what is at Harris Teeter, if that, if that was used there or not.
Can we just make sure that it's not the same thing, that it's a better quality?
Yeah, it's, it's all about the subbase and the thickness and the capacity of the material to withstand that traffic. So it's a, it's a very good point.
We take note of that. It's a good question.
Okay. Just because it looks so beautiful right now, and I, and you want it to keep looking beautiful for the long term. And if our standards are something that make it less likely to be sustainable, I just want to make sure that we are adjusting our standards to that it is sustainable, so it sticks around for a while.
I, I do think us moving towards the builders and developers being responsible for the maintenance has a better assurance of us being able to keep up with it. We have limited staff to keep up with city sidewalks that are city-owned and maintained. And so when projects come forward, more recently, we have been requiring the developer to make sure the front door of their property is built by them to proper standards and maintained by them, which point we can require them to fix it if it isn't, if it isn't maintained properly.
Great, thank you.
All right, other questions, comments? If you could go to one of the slides, I'll ask just one or two brief comments or questions, just relating to how the commons will continue through up to the metro station. It looked like on Mustang Alley, right in that area, there's a fair amount of trees, is, that's the first submission.
Yeah, go to the next page.
So how does the commons continue through? Like, it looked like it wasn't sort of a straight shot, the, the road compresses maybe. What happens as you go over Mustang Alley? What's contemplated as the road continues on to Metro?
What happens as you go over Mustang Alley? What's contemplated as the road continues on to metro?
So I think with the change in the, in the site, we're still determining exactly what that will be, but there will, there will be still kind of a central experience up to the metro. It probably won't have the kind of necessarily grand park that, that our, uh, space has, but still continuing that, that, um, nice experience to be walking up there. Um, Evan and Robin are both on, I don't know if they have anything else they'd want to add to kind of.
Yeah, I would, I would say, I, I think, I think the answer to your question, um, uh, Mayor Charter would just be, you know, we should push Virginia Tech to continue the same concept across Falls Church Drive, uh, when they, you know, if, you know, when they get to the point to redevelop. And as you guys are working with them on the grant for this road, the idea of the road transitioning into a more typical road on their site somewhere, whether it is, you know, right at the entrance on Fall, on, um, sorry, I meant to say Mustang before. If it's right at Mustang Alley, or it's closer to the Falls Church Drive side of the street. But that road, you know, at some point on the parking lot, they're, they're likely going to want to maintain as much of their existing parking as possible and avoid their existing impediments to get that street built. So it won't be the exact same that we've proposed, but it'll certainly, it can certainly be really nice, um, and can kind of taper as it gets close to Falls Church Drive. And then, of course, the hope is they redevelop, you know, ultimately, and surround it with, you know, beautiful broad sidewalks and buildings like we all have been hoping to see.
Could you zoom in to the transition on our site? Someone?
Working on it.
Yeah. Cindy's doing, it's just a little slow.
Yeah, just give me direction if you want this or another slide.
I mean, I don't know, given how long it's taken, I guess just this one. I'm just trying to see, um.
Yeah, and then if you just want to.
Yeah, you're, well, I can, I can describe it. You're, what you're seeing here is the commons on our site and their existing conditions plan. We had sent a plan to staff of how the road could continue through and avoid their existing building and rework their loading dock. That's really the big trick, is that their loading is like a circle that comes in and then comes back out right in the wrong location. So that will have to be reworked as part of this, so that it comes out onto the new commons drive or makes a turn, um, earlier. But in general, our commons design was designed to avoid their building so that you could continue that infrastructure to the north, um, onto that landing site. And then you can taper as you get closer to Falls Church Drive into a more typical road section.
So if this road is to continue, how on our side is it to happen? In other words, like right now, it looks like all we've planned is an access into their, I don't know what that is, like their loading dock or something, maybe?
Yep.
Yeah, so, so it's a six-way stop sign essentially. You have stop signs at the end of our two main roads, and then you have stops. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, let me ask if that's right. Is Mustang Alley free flow? Is, is, um, Gabby, do you recall, or is that also stops?
Well, that's a good question. Let me.
I can't remember. I think once the road is going across, it's a six-way stop, so that it's a safe pedestrian-oriented intersection from all approaches. I just can't 100% guarantee that. We can follow up with you on that.
Yes.
I guess all I want to make.
There are stop signs, um, for the commons approaching Mustang Alley.
And then are there stop signs on Mustang 2 Antinet, or is Mustang 3 flowing?
There are also stop signs on Mustang.
Okay, great, great. So there you go.
So I guess I would just want to make sure that this road is able to be connected, like in a proper fashion. In other words, that we don't do anything that precludes or makes it more difficult to continue the road to the metro, which I think would benefit all of us, including you all as well. You know, to have a good, attractive, uh, way to, um, the metro. And so.
Yeah, and we, we'll send you an exhibit, uh, Mr., uh, Mayor Charter, we'll send you an exhibit that shows the, you know, the concept that Rush Market come up with, which had to be phased, left the Northern Virginia Center building in place and continued our road across their entire site. So we have those drawings that shows how the whole thing connects through. We know it works. We've done the feasibility on it to make sure it works. The question as to what happens, you know, we, so we know the intersection works, and we know that road can work if, even if it was straight across the whole way. More than likely, it will taper a little bit. One of the, while we would have loved to have Virginia Tech, one of the benefits of Virginia Tech PPEA going away is that it gives us a little bit more flexibility about how that road approaches Falls Church Drive, um, to make that a better intersection. But we do know it works, and we can share the, uh, the drawings. I think we have shared them, we can share them again with staff.
Okay, I just want to make sure, you know, we got a big grant that's a high-profile grant from the state, and I just want to make sure we all are thinking about a road that's going to work and that's going to be attractive. And frankly, a showcase road. So I don't want to belabor it now, but just make sure it's, it's kind of in the forefront of your minds and staffs as well, because.
Yep, it is.
Uh, good, good. And then one last comment, I'll just say as to the garages, as I've said before, I'm not a big fan of precast concrete, even with a little bit of, um, you know, red masonry lipstick on it. I think, um, having, um, a green wall or something more creative and attractive is something I would certainly favor. So, um, I guess I'll just put my two cents in once again for, for that, particularly of some kind of living wall or green wall. We don't have many of those, if any, in the city. And I just think, you know, precast concrete is just, anyway, I just give that some consideration if you would. And otherwise, I think I'm just going to leave it there, given the hour. Does anyone else have any comments, um, on urban design right now? If not, why don't we go to the, um, the financials, the, um, fiscal analysis? That's city staff, Wyatt.
Yeah, and Carly Aubrey will walk us through this, uh, brief report that was put together again by, Becky Witzman and our EDO, and we both would be happy to answer any questions about it. Carly?
Yep. So Attachment 7, um, that first page includes table with the estimated real estate value and the unit type mix for the residential components, and then also the square footages, residential value and the sales per square footage for the commercial uses that were input, inputted into the model, um, to get the, this updated fiscal analysis. And it came up with an updated fiscal impact analysis of, with an annual net fiscal impact of approximately $4.9 million for Phase 1. And the overall project value for Phase 1 is estimated at $375 million, and approximately 69 pupils are projected for Phase 1. You'll also see at the end of that report, um, the information that the model inputs and results are based on. And some key ones I'll just highlight are that we use pre-pandemic November 2019 people ratios for the bedroom types with an annual per people expense of approximately 16,000. Then we use a real estate tax rate of the current rate of 1.355. And previous retail inputs were run at 100% retail sales, and those were rerun this time at 50% retail sales and 50% service retail. And so that's kind of what we have in the report. I can answer any questions on that?
All right, thank you. Let's see if we got any questions. Any questions from anyone? Mr. Snyder?
Well, thanks a lot. Um, so I want to learn some assumptions that are built into these numbers. Tell me about the, uh, commercial revenue generation. Are you assuming 100% occupancy, 100% activity on day one?
These are, the model assumes, um, it's a two-year stabilization period. And it depends on the, I think, the commercial component as to what, so the hotel, I believe, is assumed like, what was on the table? 70%, I believe. Yeah, 70% vacancy rate. I would have to get back on what the residential occupancies are assumed at, but I think it's in the 90s.
Yeah, so the commercial, I, I, I think it's very important to understand that your numbers for commercial will assume that all those, every square foot is going to be taken up, occupied as is hoped for. And I'm going to ask the developer about the status of the various, um, retail elements and the hotel elements and the, um, and the grocery store elements, how certain they really are. And one of the things I'll be looking for in the final agreement is either way of exploring, if we're actually going to get there, because I think that the, um, one of the major selling, uh, elements of this project. So that would be point number one. Point number two, I want to focus on residential. Tell me about the full generation cost, like service cost, how they work them.
And Carly, you might be muted. Uh, I could jump in if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I'm not super familiar with how those generation rates are prepared.
So I, I will just note broadly that the way that they're generated is that we take the actual data from mixed-use development that's been built in the city. And we do have visibility with the newer projects, um, broken down by bedroom counts. And so we can apply the pupil generation from the, uh, project since 2004 by bedroom count, uh, including Pearson Square, which is our outlier, but we do include that in our data set. And, um, and then we apply that to the bedroom count that is proposed in this development.
Have you assumed any additional pupil generation due to the fact that this project is going to be a few steps away from one of the best high schools and middle schools in the state of Virginia?
So we have taken the data straight, but there are a couple of points that I just described. So we've not added a factor, um, based on what you've just said, and it's a good point. But we have, I think what Becky would say is that we have tended to, for instance, we don't have, we haven't really broken down in detail the micro units in terms of how much square footage they have. We have been treating them like the one beds that we have in other projects, but those micro units are in fact going to be smaller than the one beds that we've seen to date. So I think, I think Becky would say we think we've been pretty, like, that, that is a, a point where we might have a bit of a fudge factor probably on the higher pupil generation side, but, you know, from a strictly projection perspective. And, um, but we don't really have a way to capture that notion other than just to, to apply a multiplier to it, um, uh, which these numbers really are just taken straight, based on our past experience applied to the bedroom counts that are in this project.
Okay, so based on this discussion, um, I would very much like to see a much more refined and nuanced, uh, projection of revenue. Do these numbers take into account the various compromises and givebacks the city has made since the beginning of this project, totaling $17 million at least? And in terms of the actual net value of this project, say, within the first five years or 10 years of this, where are we really? For example, would we be better off just selling it as a real estate venture right now? I'm just throwing that out as a potential offer. What, what is the value that we are going to receive for this property, including the delayed and reduced upfront payments within the next 10 years?
So to, to answer your question directly, the fiscal, fiscal impact analysis has no connection to the negotiations that occurred, uh, last fall and into this winter with respect to the lease payments. I think you actually could argue the city's interest in those negotiations actually, in, in many respects, was protecting the program, which generates the fiscal yields, um, that, you know, are, are so important to the city. And so, uh, we did not change the program in any significant way in those negotiations. And as a consequence, these fiscals, uh, look very similar to what you saw back when this project was first presented to the city council. The only thing that has changed is some of our, you know, updated, uh, uh, our own sort of procedures on how we treat different uses, uh, but the program itself has stayed very consistent from the beginning.
And Wyatt, I think that ties back to answer Mr. Snyder's original questions about the current status. So the grocer, we have assigned lease with our grocer, and the hotel, we are, um, completing a franchise agreement with them. So, and then the rest of the, uh, the retail will be, um, we're continuing to refine the merchandising plan, and we will start leasing, but closer to the time in 2024, when things will be opening. Just because that's how the, the current retail cycle, um, is working.
And, and one thing I do want to note also is that, as Carly noted just a moment ago, this is a fiscal impact analysis at stabilization. So when we're thinking about, well, when is this 7.8 million going to come, you know, of gross revenue is going to come online to the city? Really, I think in the council's mind, the earliest that we should be thinking about those numbers is probably fiscal year 2029. That is when we think we would have stabilization, and that will also be when the pilot agreement, which is part of the original comprehensive agreement that was, um, you know, approved back in, in, uh, May of 2018, that, you know, that pilot has, you know, that runs through the construction period in those initial stabilization years and has fully run its course, so we're getting full value beginning in FY '29.
Those are questions I have for now. I'm sure I'll have more later. Thank you.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, uh, Carly or Wyatt, this project value of $375 million, is that projected assessed value at stabilization for the real estate?
Yes.
And we're building, how much leasable square footage, Laura?
Oh, sorry, retail leasable?
No, just total, total, total square footage across the project. Is it 1.3 million, 1.4?
Approximately, um, yes.
That, uh, those, that would include, uh, Phase 2, so I think Phase 1 is more like a million, one, 1.1 maybe, or?
Yeah, somewhere between a million and 1.1. That's correct, sorry.
So we, we're saying that this project, when it's stabilized, is going to be assessed at about $341 a square foot? Is that, is that correct? So that's a stabilized value of $375 million, stabilized?
It does vary by use, and so, you know, the condo, I think, probably has the highest value per square foot. And so that, this chart that we have here, uh, provides the square footage, uh, range.
And Laura.
That we have.
Yeah, I see. Laura, what's, what are total construction costs?
Um, I'm not sure if we're providing that information, um.
Was that not public, or do we just? It feels like everything's public at this point. I've got, I know I have that information somewhere, so I'm going to go back and look at it. I'm just going to say that, uh, that number seems really, really low to me, uh, for stabilized, based on what's being constructed, just that real estate assessed value. I, I would imagine this is conservative, but 375 million, um, just seems low. Uh, and then looking at the, the office value of $300 per square foot, what are the, do we have an estimate of, of asking rents on that project? That portion? If I recall, wasn't it? Was it in the 50s?
Again, that's not information, um, that I think we want to share publicly.
Okay. Yeah, I think, um, similar to, to Dave's comments, I, I'd really like to dig into the details of this, um, fiscal impact analysis, um, in, in much greater detail. So, I mean, it's, listen, it's good to be conservative, because right now we're talking about, so, we're talking about net fiscal impact of 11 cents on the tax rate. And in light of our recent budget conversations, um, I certainly would think that that's on the low end. Uh, I think that that's, um, still a very strong number, but I'd, I'd really like to dig into the, to the details of that. And I will, I will go do my own homework on that, Laura, and find that information.
And I will note for the council, um, we have not distributed this to the city council as of yet. But the developer has commissioned their own fiscal impact analysis by, um, RCLCO, and we can share that. It's useful for us just to see what another professional set of eyes on a project like this does. I will say that from the staff perspective, we are very inclined. I will say that from the staff perspective, we are very inclined to stick with our analysis. We, one of the things that we value is try to be consistent in our methodology from project to project so that things aren't just sort of swinging wildly from one to the next. And so consistency is something that we value in this model. So, you know, we typically aren't terribly influenced by what a developer's analysis is, unless there are some certain technical, like some of our inputs were simply technically incorrect, then we would certainly address those. But a lot of the judgments, we just try to stay consistent on project to project. And that includes people generation as well as some of our projections on value.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that. And I'm not saying we should take RCLCO's model and use that as our own. But, you know, we have had to adjust some things that we've done consistently, whether it's people count or or fiscals that have been derived from, you know, grocery anchored multifamily projects. So I just want to make sure that the assumptions we're we're making are in line with what we can expect to see. Because if you're talking about the difference between stabilized at $5 million net annual fiscal impact and potentially seven, that's a, that's a big difference. And so, again, echoing Councilman Snyder's comments, but maybe for different reasons, I'd like to, I'd just like to dig into that a little bit more. I was just frankly surprised when I, when I saw that. So.
All right, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you. I also had similar questions about stabilized assumptions as it actually relates to budget. So I had actually dogged your page 60 of the budget book where we made assumptions of when we'll start seeing tax yield at West Falls Church. And so I wanted to see how that jives with the timelines from the development team. So I think I remember reading that we expected to open at the earliest 2024. Is that correct? Or is that later now, 2025?
We are still planning to open Phase One in 2024.
Okay, so we're making assumptions of a million, I guess, out of 5 million total once fully stabilized in FY2024 and then 1.5 in 2025 and so forth. Wyatt, is that still accurate? Or obviously it seems a little conservative, but how does that jive with the conversation we just had?
So one thing to remember is the, you know, the role of of the pilot. And so in that year one, 2024, per the pilot, there's a set payment of $1 million. And then that kicks up and and the years after that, up to in fiscal year 28, a set payment of 3 million. So I'm going to look at that page 60. I don't have that right in front of me, but those are some things that are in the back of our minds when we're making revenue projections. And then with that come, you know, the sales taxes and meals tax and other things that are not subject to the pilot. The pilot only addresses real estate taxes.
It's probably worth a refresher for all of us in the pilot. I know it was part of those early negotiations, but a lot's happened in a few years now.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions? I thought there might have been another hand up that may have gone down. But unless there are any others, Wyatt, was this all we were going to do tonight? I see on the agenda to strike ADUs and VCs.
Yes, sir. The plan would be to pace things out, hopefully in a manageable way. And so the focus will be on affordable housing and review the VCs at your work session on May 3.
All right, well, that being the case, why don't we then end this discussion, take a break and then come back and talk budgets? So thank you to our development partners. We appreciate the time you spent tonight and and other times with us and look forward to continuing this conversation. So thank you all very much. And let's go ahead and take a break. And I'm going to say until 10:36. So let's take a 10 minute break. We've been at this for three hours. So a 10 minute break until 10:36 and reconvene and talk budget. All right, so we'll reconvene at 10:36. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
But let's go ahead and get get back at it. We are now on the budget review portion of our work session. Mr. Shields, yes?
Let me just confirm we're live. Got confirmation. Thank you.
All right, so we're back at it. It is 10:36. We're now going to move on to the budget portion of our work session. Mr. Shields, do you have any introductory remarks you'd like to make or Ms. Powell?
Sure, just briefly, council, it's good to be with you again to talk about our operating budget. Tonight, we do have Danny Schlitt, Director of Wreckin Parks, Jenny Carroll, our library director, and Jim Snyder, our Director of Community Development, Community Planning and Economic Development Services, along with our Director of Planning, Paul Stoddard. So we're here to answer questions about operating budgets in those three areas. We also have Steve Mason that will follow after Q and A on CPEDs relating to compensation and some, you know, workforce briefing. That's three slides that he'll walk through. And then to wrap things up, Cindy does have an update on some of the federal bills that are going through the process. And I think that'll be brief, just some feedback on some of our targeted priorities that we'd submit into Congressman Byer. So that's our our plan for tonight. And as for all of our operating budgets, of course, we have our budget briefings online. And so tonight, the goal is really just to answer questions that you have. And Danny Schlitt is up first, and I'll just let him say hello and then we'll go into Q and A from there.
Yes, thank you, Wyatt. And thank you, Mayor Tarter and City Council, for the opportunity to answer some questions you might have in regard to our FY22 budget requests. Staff continue to work hard, looking for the best way to continue to provide quality recreation programming for all citizens for the City of Falls Church. I know the night's getting long, so let me just say that Recreation in Parks Budget Request for FY22 totals $3.145 million and includes 16.4 FTEs. We use five different cost centers, and I think all that information's in front of you. I know the videos went out. I hope everybody had a chance to see that. I am happy to answer any questions that anybody might have at this time.
All right, thank you so much. Let's go ahead and open up to questions. Any questions for Mr. Schlitt? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Thank you, Danny. Thank you for your video. Just want to, what are the processes for your scholarship program? Is that open only to residents of the city or is that available to residents in nearby communities to us?
Yeah, so so the, thanks for that question. This is something that we're excited about. We've got a committee right now that's working on a whole new revamped scholarship program. So I don't want to get too far advanced as far as answering that. At the present time, the thought process is that the money that's allocated through council will be for only city residents at this time. But again, we're working on that process. We're coming up with a whole new scholarship program. And we might not use the word scholarship. We talked about that the other day in one of our meetings, but we'll come up with something.
Okay, well, I look forward to learning more about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hiscott?
Danny, thanks so much for putting that scholarship program together. I know we've talked about this for, you know, for a while through the foundation, other, other projects you've had with Equity at Parks and Wreckin Parks. So I just wanted to say that I look forward to seeing how much gets utilized and reviewing it next year and hopes to continue to provide this kind of support. As we know, it's all good for everybody in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Staff is looking forward to this new kind of process that we will have.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Danny, I've had the pleasure of being your liaison for a couple of years now. So I actually don't have many questions on Wreckin Park stuff since I'm more familiar with it. So more of a comment, especially for Wyatt and team, as we just adopted tonight, both the public art policy and the district. And I think the note that we only have the grants program, which largely goes towards operating for our nonprofits, I think policies are only as good as making sure budget dollars follow it. And so as we look at ARPA funding and whatnot, I would advocate for setting aside some money to actually jumpstart some of our public art initiatives. So before Barbara Cram's passing, we had done the pilot box at the corner of Little Falls and Park Avenue. I would love for us to continue that. I think Public Works already has identified for us the rest of the boxes in town that could receive that treatment. And so that perhaps that's something that we could look to fund with federal grant money in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment.
Mr. Snyder?
Well, Danny, tell me a little bit about the Fellows' property. I've spoken to some people in the community and some folks want it to be purely a passive park. Others would like some active elements to it. Can you tell me about where we are on that and where the funding is for that?
Yeah, where we are right now is that we are starting the master park planning process. We've worked with the public on a couple of surveys and a couple of virtual meetings. Looking forward to the opportunity to be able to get out on the property with some of the neighbors and take a look at some things. We've had some good input from some folks in the urban agriculture world, world. I do believe that this park lends itself to something other than what we've built the past few park settings. In other words, I don't believe there's any reason for us to put more playground equipment. We have that right across the street at the elementary school. So there will be some neat opportunities. We have talked about the possibility of a meeting onsite now that I think protocol will allow us to do so and start kind of chipping away at some of the ideas that can happen out there. I think urban agriculture is a big part of it. And and so, and I do know some of the groups that maybe have contacted you and they've been communicating with us as well. So we're looking forward to getting together with those groups. I think this is one area that the pandemic has kind of slowed us down. Our ability to 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 start doing this virtually has not been nearly as strong as it is when you're in person with these folks. So I hope that answers your question.
I think it does. I think there are clearly some interest in in passive uses, but also interest in active uses. So it'll be a challenge, it seems to me, to find the right blend, maybe. You have any comments about that?
Yeah, I do think that some of the, the groups are going to have strong desires one way or the other. There's not many folks that really want to try to put a little bit of everything. So the reality is when we do start to get more into a planning phase or an architecture design phase, that there will be some need for some pathways and some accessible things to do. And so we'll, and I'm assuming we'll have some amenities out there that will go. But but my guess is that we're currently leaning towards, and I'm not, I'm not leaning towards, I'm trying not to lean towards anything. I'm hoping the neighbors and the community help us develop this. But so far, most of the folks, it is on more of a passive route at this time.
Okay, but no final decisions have been made and you're going to include all the views in your work on it?
That's the, that's the plan, yes. No final decisions made at all to this point.
Right, and some of the passive uses are interesting as well. So thanks very much.
Absolutely.
Did you have your hand up?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to comment to the part of Mr. Snyder's question about funding. And so FY21 does have in the CIP funding for the design work. That is, of course, going to follow after the master planning, community engagement piece that Mr. Schlitt was just speaking to. And so to align that due to the COVID delay, then in FY23, the proposed CIP would have 400,000 for implementation of what comes out of the community engagement, the design work, and then construction.
Thank you.
All right, other comments, questions? All right, thanks, Danny. Let's move on to the next one, Wyatt. Who's up next?
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Jenny Carroll, our library director, is up next. Good evening, Jenny.
All right, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to start off by thanking the library staff who have worked and continue to work on re-envisioning library services and programs during the COVID crisis and as we transition into the new library building. I, they have truly been amazing and I am so grateful for their dedication and innovation and creativity. I, I, I hope you have all had a chance to see the video. And so I welcome the opportunity to answer your questions.
All right, speaking of which, here comes the first one, Ms. Hardy.
Hi, Jenny, thanks for joining us late. So more of a comment. So I did watch the video and I wanted to note that I appreciated kind of your next equity move that you noted, which was making, I think, the first 10 pages of your printing and copying free. So while it seems like a very small thing, I think it's exactly those types of small policy decisions that actually can make a difference. So I still talk about the library fines. It's kind of one of the first things that we've done in the city when talking to other boards and commissions about kind of using that equity lens. So I just applaud you guys for really leading the way on this and appreciate the leadership.
Thank you so much.
Is that it, Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Other, Mr. Snyder?
Sure. What's the current finished date on the library, the period when it'll theoretically be open, subject to whatever COVID-19 rules are in place then?
So substantial completion is now scheduled for May 29th. Final completion is June 29th. And then we'll probably need about four weeks to move in all of the furniture, the the books. The collection is is in two different places right now. So we'll need to bring the collection back into the building and reintegrate it. So probably looking at late July as opening to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you for the question.
All right, any other questions or comments, Ms. Carroll? All right, thank you very much. We look forward to that library reopening.
And as do I. Thank you so much.
Who's up next, Mr. Snyder?
He is, and he's joined by Paul Stoddard, but Jim will go first.
All right.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you about the Community Planning and Economic Development Services Department. It's quite a mouthful, but it does reflect the wide variety of things we do and we try to coordinate with the good leadership of our division chiefs, the work of economic development under Becky Whitman, planning under Paul Stoddard, zoning and the permit counter under John Boyle, and building safety under Doug Fraser and John Russell. It's been a very busy year. We have 10, as I count them, including city council, boards of commissions that we staff, as well as other regional groups that we're very involved in. And so it's been a challenging year. At this point, our, I think our staff is pretty much fully occupied. We don't have a We don't have a lot of extra room for extra things, but people have worked very hard and accomplished a lot in the last year. A particular note, the new high school getting built and inspected and under occupancy, the continuing work on Founder's Row, the number of planning items that have been going through the process. And then future projects that you were hearing, as well as the COVID response that economic development and the EDA have been working on along with wayfinding. We also have Paul Stoddard on the line. Paul was good enough to do the video. I had technical problems with my computer. Now it works and I have a camera that works. So thank you, IT. But Paul, do you want to pitch in here and, and briefly describe some of the work planning is involved in?
Sure. Thanks so much, Jim. Paul Stoddard, Director of Planning with the city. Thank you all for the opportunity to, to make the recorded budget presentation. Obviously, I'm looking forward to another year of planning in the city and just want to say thanks to the planning staff for all they've done to make the work possible over the last year. Obviously, every department has had to switch to remote work and they found their work changing on a day-to-day basis. And of course, the planning shop no different with a lot of folks shifting their area of focus to, to be on development review. With so much happening in the city, obviously West Falls Church, Broad in Washington, Founder's Row One, and then the applications in for Founder's Two, as well as the Atlantic proposal at One City Center. We are still finding some time for long-range planning with an East End small area plan on the docket for this fiscal year. Continuing to deliver projects that are already grant-funded, a number of Park Crossings projects, WNOD in Berman, as well as neighborhood traffic calming, and continuing to search for outside resources, whether that's grant funding for construction or technical assistance programs. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's open it up to questions and comments from council. Any comments? Ms. Hardy?
Hi, thanks for joining us, Jim and Paul. Couple of questions. I know that we had Doug Fraser's retirement in building safety and I think anecdotally, I think you might have shared that we had kind of a backlog in permits with some openings as well. Are we back up and well-staffed now?
We have filled Doug's retirement and promoted John Russell, who's very capable new building official, but with a lot of experience. And we've recently hired with the help of HR and finance two new inspectors to fill some vacancies. In the budget, there is a additional person proposed for the counter position, which I think is really crucial to keep that backlog from growing too much. Virtual processing does take additional time and it has additional challenges. We have asked for additional help in the economic development side. I think that's a, that's a group that's kind of understaffed, given all the things that city wants to do. But it's been a challenge, but I think we were in better shape. We were a while back when we, during the frozen period where we had staff freezing of vacancies and retirements. That was a very challenging time. So things are looking better now. Appreciate the help of, of HR, city manager and, and finance in helping to fill those positions.
Got it. That's good to hear that things are improving. Is there a goal in terms of turnaround time? And when someone shows up and says, I want to do X to my house or my business to when they can actually start work? And then how are we doing relative to that goal if we have one?
Well, we want to be able to respond quickly. I think one of the key things is going to be getting that counter position in place. It takes time to bring people on, train them. They have to learn MUNIS. So I'd like to be able to get that recruitment started now so that in July, we actually hit the ground with a person on board. That's pretty crucial. It also will help as we hopefully open up a little bit more, get more people back in the building. I think that will help some, but that additional capacity to take the permitting work that comes through the, through the door and sort it out and and, and work with the building safety group to prioritize it and organize it is something that needs to happen. We hope to have Steve Helfer, who worked on the high school project, be able to begin to institute some kind of a walkthrough process. He worked on that when he was in Arlington. We hope we can do that here. It'll take some time to get that going, but that should improve turnaround time. We have focused on major projects first and we've also focused on commercial fit-outs while trying to keep the homeowner and the, and the first time and user with good turnaround time. We've been using virtual inspections, which has been successful. We hope to continue doing that. But we also hope to look at some new technology and see if we can provide some more technological approaches that will work better for the future to get more information out to people who have permits in process. So they can determine where they are in terms of the permit process, what the status of their permit is. That's going to take some work and it's something we don't have now, but hope to have in the future.
And that counter position you mentioned is funded in the city manager's budget recommendation, correct?
Yes, that is recommended. We did have some other things we were asking for. It'll depend on how the whole budget works out as to whether those get added.
I heard was definitely residential homeowners who were having a long wait to do additions. Everything, everyone's with people being trapped at home have wanted to do lots of expansions and they've mentioned that there's quite a backlog.
I would like to give a shout out to Brian Fanchel as a city resident who has manned the counter and, you know, individually in the office during this COVID crisis. He's done extraordinary work and it's been a real asset to have a city resident who's been willing to do that. And it's been a, a big help and his, his fortitude in doing that is, is appreciated by everybody in the department.
Great. My second question is, I think Paul and the video you mentioned, working on the residential permit parking program. Could you go into more details about what that is? Do we have a problem with residential parking? Because my understanding is that where we've implemented, for example, at Winter Hill, we didn't actually see any spillover from 301 West Broad. So do, are we seeing issues a bit elsewhere?
So the residential permit parking program, for, for folks that aren't familiar, it is response to request. And generally it is, as you said, adjacent to redevelopment projects. The first one was 301 West Broad. It's, it's sort of a funny thing that we didn't have a problem there. I think in large part because the, the program rolled out before there was really an opportunity for parking from the apartment building to spill over into the adjacent neighborhood. I think the approach in a lot of other communities is let's wait for there to be a problem and then do something about it after the fact. That, that can be a tough situation to, to work from. I think the cities, I think the city should congratulate itself for, for being proactive. Doing that at 301 West Broad, doing it at Founder's Row. We did play a little bit of catch-up when there was a complaint nearby the North Gate Building. But I think in general, it's something that's included in the voluntary concession package with recent projects that the developer, developer contributes the cash necessary to roll out the, the signs, to buy stickers for the, for the adjacent residents. So it's just something that Jeff Sykes leads that program and, and he's on staff. And so it's just calling out that that's something that he'll, he'll continue to be available for throughout the year.
Got it. Okay. It's worth also following Arlington's conversation on, and I think they had a recent change in their program, especially taking into account some equity concerns. While there's obviously a careful balance between making sure the neighbors feel like they have parking with making sure that the neighbor is actually welcoming to visitors. So it'd be good for us to just, for Jeff to follow that. And then also in Jeff's area is neighborhood traffic calming. So we've heard from the CACT several times that they are certainly advocating for tactical urbanism. So the idea of being able to kind of test and learn or pilot some quick things is figure out what would work. So I think a good opportunity between CPED and DPW on where we can deploy that, because I think in general, people like to see more solutions on the ground, especially when it comes to things like traffic calming.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, there, there have been books on, on the benefits of tactical urbanism going back probably a decade now at least. And I think one of the big things it takes is a willingness to, to sort of know that you're going to do things and they're going to be wrong. That I think that's not always a, a popular approach, especially in public policy. But I think having the confidence to, to try something out and, and knowing that, you know, so long as no one's going to get hurt from it and it's something that you can adapt, then it, then it's okay to roll out something and change it a couple of months later.
Yeah. Setting with the neighbors is probably the thing that helps make sure that, you know, you know that you're, you're piloting something and trying it out. And so as long as people know, have that expectation, that it's probably okay. So to the extent that we can push that kind of mindset when we look at NTC projects, I think that'd be great to be able to get more things out there.
All right. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Hiscott?
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. The first is the, the mention of a future expense on web-enabled permit process. And you mentioned that briefly tonight as well. Not for an answer tonight, but I definitely am interested in understanding what the cost of that is and, and how difficult it will be to implement in terms of staffing and transition. Because it seems like a really good return on investment if we were to invest in something like that. So I would like to learn a little bit more about that and the future planning for that web-enabled permit process.
Yeah, I think one of the issues there is we work within the existing MUNIS system and they have a module which conceivably can help with this. So it'll take time and effort to see how well that could help us achieve that. And so that's something we'll try to investigate. But that MUNIS system kind of permeates all of the work at City Hall. And so we try to work within that, that particular framework.
Would that MUNIS system, that web-enabled permit process part of MUNIS allow you to do what you'd be interested in doing? I mean, how is it?
Excuse me. I'm sorry for interrupting. That's what we need to, I think, investigate is see what it can do. And see if we can get some specialists from the company to come in and help us explore how that module could be adopted and, and, and used within the existing system. It's difficult to overlay a completely different system, I think, when you have one as long established as the MUNIS system that we have. It's not to say there aren't other systems that could work well. But that's one to investigate.
And that probably ties back into staffing levels and for the overall department, which I guess we'll hear a little bit more about from Mr. Mason. And then there was a mention about counter security in the video. I just want, I didn't understand what that issue is.
Well, it's, you know, it's where the counter is located, lots of people come into the building, kind of wander down those stairs and want to know where to go next. There is some concern about trying to improve that public area there right in front of the counter to make sure it is secure and functions better than it does. I think it's detailed briefly in the, in the budget document. That's something that zoning Yeah, something zoning encounter services have, have mentioned that would be very, they believe would be very helpful as they deal with day-to-day visitors. We also, our counter also receives and issues all permits through Public Works that come through for their office as well, since we share that same floor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Quick question. I had a person talk about it took them seven months to get a permit to add a patio in the back of their house. Can you tell me what the current backlog is and wait time for someone getting a permit?
That sounds, I'd have to know more about that particular one. That sounds extraordinary. I don't know the details of that, but it's, it's longer than we'd like it to be presently. I can't give you the exact number right now, but we do try to analyze those on a monthly and quarterly basis. We can get back to you on that. The patio in the back of a house, was this a townhouse or a, what kind of a, what kind of a situation was this?
A townhouse.
Paul's on the line. We have done some administrative work to try to work with people who have a townhouse, are part of a townhouse project because they have a homeowners association, sometimes an architectural board that has to be coordinated with. And sometimes that's the hangup, but Paul, we've, you may have some insight on, on some of these situations where we have it, it's kind of becomes a mini-site plan if, if I'm thinking correctly about what Councilman Snyder is mentioning.
Yeah, it is, it is a code cleanup that we've identified. And we want to talk about it with the Planning Commission and maybe get something in front of the council that, that what happens as written up in the city site plan code, development ordinances. When a, when a townhouse project goes through, the development of that and the design of that is governed by a site plan. When an owner wants to come through and then add a deck or a porch or maybe extended a, a deck or a porch, as it's written up in the code today, they need to come through an administrative site plan process. Those should never take seven months. So that's, that's, that's not right. But they do take an amount of time. It takes staff time to process. It takes applicant time to wait. It takes applicant cost to prepare the construction documents. As far as I know, we've ever, we've never actually had an application denied. So it's one of those things where people are spending money and time on these things, but it's not actually producing any changes in the design. So it is something that staff has flagged as something to bring up to Planning Commission and Council as a, as a fixed in code.
Councilman Snyder, I think ideally a simple project like that, particularly if the homeowners association has a standard that, you know, we're fine with decks of X size or patios of X size. That should be something we could administratively sign with the planning directors professional view and looking at having their urban designers look at it and handle it as a, something handled by the planning director administratively put into the record. We have a very strict site plan amendment process, which I think frankly is more than we need to do. Simple things like that where professional judgment can, can be used to make a good decision.
Okay. Well, thanks a lot for that. And I appreciate all the, all the work. These have been very tough times for everybody. So thanks for the, the work that you and all the, all the staff do.
All right. Unless there are any other questions or comments, I would just say that we all greatly appreciate the work you guys have done to keep the city's economic engine going. And this new development we're talking about is substantial and has really, I believe, improved the finances of the city, but more importantly, quality of life of the city. And so I just for myself at least, want to thank you both for your fine work.
We appreciate it. I will say there's no lack of interest in the city of Falls Church. We're it's a lot of interest in the city and I think all of our divisions are working hard to try to accommodate it in a way that's best for the community.
All right. Thank you. So let's go ahead and move on then to general budget conversation. Is there all right to you, I guess, looks like we've got two more things to go. One is employee compensation. And then also Cindy, I think was going to discuss some of the broader conversations that we've been having. So who's up next? Mr. Mason?
Mr. Mason is up next. And we had gotten a, a number of questions just about employee compensation. So we have a three-deck or three-slide deck here that Mr. Mason will walk through and hopefully it's responsive to questions and he can answer any others that you might have.
All right. Well, thank you. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor Tardy and members of city council. Recognizing the, the late hour, I do want to go quickly through my budget or my presentation. It's only three slides as Wyatt said. So Cindy, if you could go to the next slide, please. First of all, I wanted to give you a quick recap on our FY 2021 activities. As you know, that COVID-19 presented some unprecedented challenges for the city. And one of the first things we did in response to this challenge was to freeze salaries and, well, excuse me, we had to freeze vacancies. And at that time, it was probably approximately 30 vacancies, but right now we currently have 20 vacancies open. And that represents about 10% of our workforce. We also cut all travel and training. And along with the elimination of the compensation increases that resulted in about $2.4 million in spending cuts across all departments. But recognizing the hard work of city employees, the city manager instituted a one-time tiered cash bonus in December of 2020 for full-time and part-time employees. And then also last fall, we instituted hazard pay for our public safety employees and that was $2.50 an hour. And we use Caris fundings for that. Cindy, next slide, please. Of course, during this pandemic, other Northern Virginia jurisdictions took similar actions, but some took more drastic actions, some says furloughing employees and freezing salaries. But city pay remained competitive during that time. Then in January, as a result of the city manager's inquiry in regards to some of our lower salaries, we instituted a compensation study and that was conducted by benefits manager, Latonya Hall. by benefits manager, Latonya Hall, and, uh, we looked at DPW operations as well as the rec and park, uh, maintenance staff, and that study led to salary adjustments between five and 20%, which have now been instituted and are budgeted for FY 22 as well. Currently, police salaries are, uh, under review. Um, so we are also looking at a compensation study for them, and in FY 22, we will be looking at a conference, compensation study, uh, during that time. Uh, and then, um, also at this time, we are reviewing the city classification and pay plan for possible adjustments. Cindy? And I just wanted to give you an idea of what some of our nearby jurisdictions are doing in, doing in regards to proposed pay increases. And you can see, uh, everything from the city of Alexandria using its steps and reinstituting its steps at 2.3 to 5% all the way down to the, uh, 3% for others. Uh, currently, right now, Arlington County is, uh, still to be determined, and they have a $500 cash bonus for their employees. And Fairfax County is still to be determined, and they're looking at a $1,000 cash bonus. So with that, uh, it's brief, but I'm going to open, uh, for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions from Mr. Mason? All right, let's go on to Cindy then. Ms. Master, did you want to give us an update?
And Cindy, you might be muted.
Yep, I am. Thank you. Um, uh, this evening is just a brief verbal update, and I've put together a, a three-bucket chart, um, that, um, why, and I discussed that we could share with you after this evening. Um, but I wanted to do a quick highlight because we're on, uh, two big deadlines where we can submit some concepts for, uh, possible federal funding. I will note at the outset, there's three buckets. One is the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan, um, Act and the local funding. There's no decisions and information on that yet in terms of our allocation amount, the guidance on how we can spend it, nor how, um, we will receive our money and what the timeline looks like that. Even today, there were some discussions regionally, but we have nothing from the U.S. Treasury. So I will come back with more information on ARPA. There's two new kind of infrastructure, um, earmarks or special projects that I wanted to touch base on. Uh, one lightly, and that's the American Jobs Transportation Infrastructure Act, where Congressman Byer has asked regionally for his district, what projects do we want to look at that are infrastructure, transportation, and have a regional impact? The city has been working with, uh, NVTC, uh, for their regional submissions, which will be, um, bus rapid transit and looking at, um, additional funding for smart city to expand that connected infrastructure. Those are the regional ones. Citywide, um, staff-wise, we're looking at two areas because they align with comp plan, area plan, and the CIP and the goals of the infrastructure grant. So on a, a broad brush, we're looking at two areas. One is multimodal pedestrian improvements that could be citywide, looking at traffic calming, uh, sidewalks, traffic signals, pedestrian crossings, all of those things that, um, the council's, uh, vision have focused on in specific CIP projects. So that's one area. The other area is South Washington bus stop expansion and access to transit, which is a project we put in for smart scale. If it fully funded it, it's not till FY 26, so this could be an opportunity to bring those multimodal, um, benefits to South Washington sooner with our equity lens. So those two areas are the infrastructure, big, uh, Americans' job acts that we could put in for consideration as that goes through council. So not a lot of detail on that tonight. Initial reactions, welcome. We do need to get something to Congressman Byer next Monday on this, so it's moving quickly. That's why I'm focusing on compliance with policies and things in our CIP. The, the big thing I wanted to touch base on is a community request, uh, that Congressman Byers asked us for input on, and these are the ones that were in the email from last week. We need to submit to Congressman Byer our projects on April 14th, this Wednesday. The things that we've been looking at fall into the four buckets that we talked about in the email that we sent out last week. Um, one would be utility infrastructure, sanitary sewer, pipe, pipe bursting to allow us to use federal funding instead of issuing debt for capacity at the west end of the city, and for stormwater Lincoln Avenue project, specifically one of the recommendations that you heard this evening, um, from your stormwater task force. That's the utility infrastructure project grouping number one. The second project would be affordable housing homeownership for $1 million to allow us to leverage additional, um, homeownership, uh, with the Amazon grant. So we'd be able to do more homeownership for lower-income folks in our city. Uh, third area focus is, uh, working with the schools for EV chargers and electric buses. Um, and this is being done in partnership with Public Works, obviously, for making sure we could do it technically at the property yard, as well as looking at, um, the solar panels at the high school. So that's the environment one. And then the fourth project we've been looking at is the smart city connected infrastructure, but specifically on the city's traffic signals, so we could interconnect the main commercial corridors of 29 and 7th, um, up to the west end and our pilot test bed, um, allowing us to, um, update updating software, hardware, cameras, prioritization for emergency vehicles, and a rapid bus and so forth. So utility infrastructure, affordable housing, uh, EV like chargers and electric buses, solar panels for schools, and then the connected traffic signals. And these are the ones that would go in on the Congressman Byers', uh, community requests, AKA earmarks for his consideration. It will get pared down, I have no doubt, because of, um, his total limit of 10 this first year, but we will have, um, hopefully additional opportunities next year as well. Quick synopsis, and as I said, we have this sort of written up into a three-bucket chart we can share as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions on what we've heard? Mr. Duncan and Mr. Snyder?
So, thank you, Cindy, tons, and everybody else on the staff, tons of work being done and all in a big hurry. Uh, to the first item, um, the, uh, ARPA money. So basically, you're telling us that we're just not going to know, uh, how much or when or how we can use it by the time that we need to mark up the budget, uh, starting next week. Is that, is that basically it?
Correct. All indications are we will not get U.S. Treasury guidance till close to, um, the 60-day clock, which is around May 11th.
May the 11th. So we would, we would be just about two weeks past, having passed a budget, when we would find out some information in that area, and we'd still be, uh, a month and a half, uh, short of the end of the current fiscal year, much less not into the new fiscal year. So this is falling at just the wrong time for us and everybody else I see who's on the same budget cycle that we are. Um, has there been any discussion about what other jurisdictions are going to do as a result of this, you know, large elephant in the room, which will not show itself until late May, early June?
For the regional perspective and fellow CAOs, I'll defer to Mr. Shields. I will note the other thing is the actual timing of the money, uh, because as a non-entitled city, our, our funding will go to the Commonwealth and then back out to us. And we've just learned, um, some additional, uh, requirements that the General Assembly may most likely have to approve that before it comes to us. So I think in reality, we're, we're talking several months away before council would actually have, uh, funding to expand. But for the regional effort, Wyatt, I'll defer to you.
And I'll defer to the mayor. The mayor led a meeting with the Regional Commission today and had the Secretary of Finance from Virginia. Uh, the mayor, would you like to join in just on a report on that, that, uh, conversation with him?
Sure. I mean, I think the bottom line is there's just a lot of uncertainty even at the state level. And so I think frankly, everybody is waiting to get guidance from the federal government, and the guidance has been somewhat, um, I don't know if contradictory is the right word, but it's certainly not been clear. So today's call didn't, I don't think, give us, uh, much clarity as well. Um, and so I, I'm not sure what to report, frankly. Um, we just didn't get more information, and I think everyone's pretty much in the same position.
Okay. Well, that, that is the report, it sounds like. So right now, if I were to guess, I would say we might know something at the beginning of the second quarter of the next fiscal year, sometime around the first of October. Maybe, maybe around about the time that the audited fiscals for FY 21 come in, uh, we would, you know, we would find out, A, how much we here in Falls Church ended up to the good on our surplus as of June 30th, and two, we would find out, uh, you know, the amount and disposition possibly of how we could use the external money, but probably not before then, not before October or so.
I don't think that's true. I think we'll know, we'll know before then. I mean, presumably by May 11th, and I think, um, if recollection serves, that's 60 days out. But no, I don't think it will have to wait that long. We may have to wait that long to actually receive some of the, this money. And Cindy was alluding earlier to this notion that, um, jurisdictions with less than 50,000 people, um, will not get direct funding from the federal government, but it'll actually go through the state, which in turn may require a, um, General Assembly, um, blessing because it's a budget item. And so that, we didn't receive much clarity on today either, but that is a potential, uh, pitfall or delay. So, uh, but in terms of knowing the information, I think the information should be available. Again, I think by May 11th, the actual disposition of the money or the money being received in our hands, that's a little bit more uncertain, but I think we'll have knowledge.
Oh, as soon as, as soon as, you know, mid-May, we would know how much we're going to get and to what ends we may put it. We just might not have the money in hand until, uh, later, you know, later, or, or, uh, fall time or so, say.
And there also is state money. You know, the state's getting over $3 billion and the federal government as well, which they're going to put to use. And so there's a possibility that we may receive some money in connection with that as well. But again, those policies and those, um, you know, monies, uh, allocations are being done right now as we speak as well. So we don't have any clarity on that either.
Well, okay, I've probably said enough, but, you know, I mean, obviously the reason I'm asking is to answer to the question, you know, what are the other jurisdictions doing? I mean, we saw Loudon County, they've decided to make a pretty significant, uh, trim in their tax cut rate. Uh, you know, are other jurisdictions going to do that either because they're expecting external money or because like us, their own circumstances are pretty good, and they probably would have been able to do some kind of tax rate trim anyway, as we have started to do. I'm just trying to get some sense of, um, you know, when. And if you're telling me the middle of May, then I guess, you know, at some point, not tonight because it's too late, I'd like to talk about a process that would basically enable us to act on that knowledge in time to do some good in the new fiscal year budget.
Sure. I mean, I would say this, that, you know, independent cities, as you probably know, have more uncertainty as relates to the funds that they're going to receive. We receive numbers, I think, from anywhere approximately 3.1 million to 15 million, which is a super wide spread. So I do think, um, counties are in a little bit different boat, um, particularly large counties are a different boat, um, than independent cities. But that being said, I believe we'll have clarity by May 11th.
Okay. And what I'm hearing from most localities, because of that uncertainty on use and the allocation, and you all are all in the midst of the budget, I'm not hearing, um, from my counterparts and the legislative liaison, especially for those of us that the money goes to the state, um, making decisions for the current budget, but knowing that they're going to have to come back and do a budget amendment. Localities by Loudon, they are entitled, so they will get their money directly, but they also don't know how much, and they don't know the guidance. And so the, what you're seeing in that, um, news report certainly was their decisions and actions were not based on ARPA, to my understanding.
Okay. So it's the budget amendment, you know, process answer is, there's going to be some sort of budget amendment. And I guess my question based on my observation of our process over the years is, can the budget amendment include, uh, you know, uh, the taxation element, uh, as we did, I think, the first year that I served on council? And that's something that, you know, not brought up in the context of this year's budget, but it sounds like that's the direction that, you know, we might want to think about going in if we're not going to be able to know by April 26th, uh, exactly what the, the amount and what the guidance, uh, is. Maybe we'll know the, and we might know the guidance, but we don't know the date that we'd actually receive the money.
I think that's accurate. Mr. Snyder?
Yeah. So my questions and comments are virtually identical to those of Phil Duncan, so we don't need to, to go over that again. Um, so my, my question about the, uh, current budget is, is there, if, if I recall, there's about $400,000 in capital pay-go projects. Do I have that right? What, what is that number? You can get it to me later. I, I am, I am interested in that number to the extent that this is, what, what is it in the operating budget that is reasonably capital and reasonably likely to be covered once the money is there under the federal, uh, under a federal program? So there's a whole set of questions there. Um...
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Uh, this is Kieran. Good evening. So, to answer your question briefly, the budget includes the local funds that it has in the CIP for pay-as-you-go. In addition to the CNIE, that is earmark for transportation, we have 425,000, uh, 125 for, um, uh, 200,000 for, sorry, pay-as-you-go, 100,000 for NTC, and 150, uh, for, uh, street sidewalks. So that's a total of 450,000, sorry.
Okay. And how much in the current operating budget is for stormwater? Anything or it's all covered in this year's budget on stormwater phase?
The, the total of the capital cost of the stormwater projects is approximately $7 million.
Right.
And, um, so we're doing the final engineering for that, and, uh, that is in the CIP. And so we would go forward and ask for council authorization for construction contracts as well as council authorization, uh, to issue debt for those projects, once the engineering is complete. But this certainly is an area where, um, I think it would be a very attractive option to potentially avoid that debt and avoid the accompanying rate increases to be able to accomplish those flood projects. Uh, so that's one of the, I think, uses potentially of all three of the baskets that Cindy has mentioned. And we have suggested in, in her briefing that the top priority for our community priority projects, AKA earmarks, that we would submit to Don Byer for the appropriations bills, is their, the stormwater projects.
Right. But that, those earmarks would be part of the larger infrastructure program? Or are you talking about something separate?
It could be both, but it, it, um, what we're most immediately talking about is the annual appropriations bills. And so the, the, the American Jobs Act, the rules for that have not been fully made clear to us. However, the appropriations bills, and that's what Cindy was really, I think, the, kind of the key thing of her briefing was, we have, uh, next week, we need to, uh, I think by Friday this week, they want us to submit.
This Wednesday.
They, this Wednes- Wednesday this week, they want us to submit kind of our top priorities for earmarks. And, uh, so we're for earmarks. And so we're suggesting stormwater is the top priority, affordable housing is the second, EV charging, EV buses is the third, and then fourth is, is traffic signalization, sort of smart cities technology that we run all throughout the city, mainly in the Route 7 corridor, as the fourth priority, to, to ease traffic congestion in the city.
Right. And then one of the regional projects that NVTC will be endorsing will be the bus rapid transit from Alexandria through Falls Church's license corner. Is that right? Did I hear that right?
Yes, but that would be under the jobs, Americans Job Infrastructure Bill, so that would be separate from the appropriations, and that would also have the potential from additional smart city. Now, the NVTC has others. I'm only listing the ones that directly impact the city.
Okay. What's the possibility of any of these sort of giving us brand monies to like do all the traffic calming that's out there that's desired, rather than sort of this one, and then one, and then one approach, sort of enforced into?
I think the Americans Jobs Act's infrastructure, we have the potential there, looking at our multimodal pedestrian improvements. So that would be all of the, the traffic signals intersection piece, not the signal technology, but the intersections, our sidewalks. Now, because I don't know all of the, the rules of that bill yet, I don't know how far into the residential corridors we could get, but I do think a large number of our roads all feed in, and so it could be part. Some of their key goals is racial inequities, mitigating disparities, and affordable access, and resilient infrastructure. So I, I think we could, based on goals, NTC-type projects, sidewalk-type projects, intersection-type projects could be something we do on the big infrastructure bill, where we can get more money and have multiple years to deploy it. The earmarks is a smaller dollar amount, has to be shovel-ready this October to be shown as successful, and they want to suspend it in about a year.
Right. Okay. So finally, the resources for leasing, I need to know more. I think Councilmember Hardy asked a very good question, benchmarking. I want to, I want to wrestle more with that, about exactly what we need, how we would deploy additional money if we had it. Are there non-sworn police officers we can use for some functions? And I think at a prior meeting, we went into the fact that we may become a pilot for, I guess, use of mental health quotes on balls. So, but mostly it's this police resource. But we also have the Sheriff's Department. Are we maximizing their function since they're there and they're being paid, and they do perform important functions? So how, how is the city manager, how are we going to get a hold of this? And because none of us wants to allow leasing to drop below where it ought to be in our city. So what, what's your sort of game plan here, within the budget constraints that we've set, to, to, you know, some sort of plan and, and sort of addressing that whole issue?
I do think that the ARPA money is an opportunity for meeting new needs that are not addressed in the budget. And, and so what we're doing right now is trying to work through what are responsible things we could use those ARPA dollars for. It's a difficult thing to plan for, given all the uncertainty that we've already talked about. But we can certainly put those principles together, and, and, and meeting our public safety needs is certainly a high priority. So I think those are the options that we'll bring to council.
Very helpful. And thanks for the really hard work of part of every state. Thank you.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah. So I am somewhat singularly focused now, after our last couple of meetings, or the last couple of months, at, at lowering our tax rate. And it's unfortunate we don't have the information for ARPA, but I still don't think that should deter us from looking for other areas for us to reduce our tax rate. I'm confident that some of that money's going to come in, and we can slice and dice and determine where that money needs to be spent, based on all the robust conversations today. But I still think it's important for us to not take our eye off the ball in terms of looking to aggressively cut the tax rate. Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that, you know, we've, we've got close to nine cents in tax rate being produced by the, by the next two projects, one of which will deliver in the next year, which is Founder's Row, and then Broad and Washington, which has recently been approved. I'd like to know two things. We don't have to answer it tonight. One, how much of our budget for next year have, or how much of Founder's Row, I should say, has been baked into the budget next year? And then two, if we find that this ARPA money has more flexible application, even if it's May 11, could we find out and think about and plan for offering that money, if possible, as an abatement or a refund to taxpayers? Because what I don't want to happen is for that money to come in, and it effectively just gets, I don't want to say lost, but applied to things that may take care of unfunded needs or other things that we need to, to pay for, but don't ultimately offer relief to taxpayers. And I, I found it somewhat interesting that conversation over the last week, even including a, a poll in the Falls Church News Press about, I think, folks somewhat maybe less than enthusiastic response about how the developments that have been approved have, have helped lower the tax rate. It doesn't seem that most folks feel like that they've, they've seen those dividends. So again, I would urge all of us to look for opportunities to aggressively cut the tax rate this year. I, for one, would like to see it at $1.31, whether we, whether we know that ARPA money can be spent or not. I'm confident between the economic development projects, as well as other areas in the budget, and what will be coming, we can do that. And so let's not, let's not, let's not get lost in the timing and the discussion of what may happen a year from now, when we have a chance to make a big difference for taxpayers right now, even with the information that we have.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Hardy?
Um, Wyatt, can we talk through the mechanics of how, let's say we find out ARPA money in mid-May, how, given the rules that we can't use the money to supplant, to reduce the tax rate, how could we apply that to Ross's point, back to the operating budget, without violating that rule?
So the, I, I think one thing that I think is, we should just state, as a technical matter, well, maybe we should wait until we actually get the Treasury guidance on it, because everything we're getting is from third parties. And what we found out is that the third parties are not as reliable as maybe we would have liked, because it seems like there's a lot of confusion out there. So I'm not going to state right now what third parties are saying. So here's the process. What I would imagine is, once we get the Treasury guidance, and we get the allocation amount, let's say that that is in May, we would then have an understanding as to what the General Assembly schedule is going to be. Probably that is September or October, before the money is actually appropriated and we receive it. But nonetheless, we could work through a budget amendment as soon as the month of June to appropriate our ARPA allocation. To do what Mr. Lichtenhouse suggested as a mechanics, I think probably the only thing to do would be to do a rebate, which we did back in 2000, not, 2012, 2013, or something like that. Given the language that certainly applies to states, where there are certifications that the monies can't be used to cut taxes, we need to reserve some judgment about whether that would be a feasible use of ARPA. Again, let's wait until we get the Treasury guidance, but I think we should be cautious about a rebate strategy, just given sort of what we've been hearing so far about it.
Got it. So hopefully, there's at least a reasonable middle ground where we can make, I think where Dave Snyder was going, is what are those reasonable things that we think ARPA likely will cover, that were proposed to be pay-go? And in my list, I have, and Karen and Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong when reading the budget book, 200,000 for facilities reinvestment, 125,000 for school facilities, the 50,000 for body cameras, and then some other things that are below the line for me, for example. So NTC, paving, sidewalks, and housing, for me, feel like things that should be evergreen in our operating budget. So I do think it's important to have discipline to find out, is there ARPA would allow us to create, for example, a four-year fund for each of those things? So essentially, when our money comes in, we could create four years' worth of NTC, so we don't have to fund it out of operating. And then by then, you know, to Ross's point, we should see a lot more economic development dividends pay off. But that already gets us another penny, and I think I could get comfortable with, say, $1.33 by making more reasonable and, you know, somewhat conservative cuts there, and then still reserve room for ARPA to come in and fund a lot of things that we haven't been able to get to. Cindy, were, were my numbers correct on the CIP pay-go items?
Yes, ma'am. The other things we can't touch that we use local money for Womata, because it's CIE, which is what draws down the 30 and 70%. I think some of the things that I know at a staff level we're thinking about, and then, well, once we have guidance, as we've said, we can have a fuller discussion with you all. But I appreciate the below-the-lines, where you want to make sure we have structural sustainability and future for pay-go, because if we replace all pay-go at some point, you either stop the program, or you have to restore it. There are other things we can do, like use cash instead of debt. So if you don't have debt service payments, that's a long-term benefit and can reduce your operating budget. I do have a list of things I've heard from staff that are pandemic responses that we're keeping in mind, too. Rental assistance, food assistance, utility assistance, PPE, some of that piece as well. And then there is the ability to do supplemental pay for essential workers. So there's several tranches we're looking at, but along the lines you all are discussing, how can we do cash instead of debt for things in the general fund, but also your sanitary sewer and your stormwater, if we can get clarity on stormwater, since it's not one of the infrastructures? And that then reduces tax rate pressure or utility rate pressure.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hardy? This is Karen. Just a quick clarification. So on the funding for the school, the 125,000 is not from the operating budget, it's from the capital reserve. And the 50,000 on the body worn cameras and the CIP is seized assets, again, not operating dollars.
Got it. So I need to find another 175 somewhere else.
Yes.
But we can, you know, as a setup to the council markup, on April 19th, so Mr. Lichtenhouse asked for, what's the delta between what we're currently forecasting, or what's baked into FY 22 for Founder's Row, and what is the sort of the stabilized number, revenue number for Founder's Row? What's the gap between the two? So that's one thing we can get to the council. And the list of pay-go items that I think both Councilmember Hardy and Councilmember Snyder asked for, we can have that list. As we've discussed before, one other option, if, you know, just to consider it, you know, my recommendation actually is to go with the advertised rate and keep the ARPA as a, as a separate discussion down the road. But in terms of options before the city council, the other option is to consider the delta between certain revenues, such as meals taxes and hotel taxes. Take FY 19 actuals, and compare that to FY 22 budget, and have that delta, you can, you can use ARPA money to make up that difference, that, than dollar-for-dollar impacts what your real estate tax rate needs to be if you, if you move, if you use the ARPA money for that purpose. So those are the sort of the range of options that I think the council is asking for information on, and we can, we can provide that to you. And so you have time to sort of think about it and process it before the April 19th work session. I think with all of this discussion of the use of the ARPA dollars, it is an expenditure. And so, you know, not knowing what that dollar amount is, obviously has some risk to it, but, you know, anything that goes towards a tax rate reduction just means it won't be used to meet other objectives that those ARPA dollars could be used for. And that'll be the trade-off.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I would just like to second the request made by Ms. Hardy, Mr. Lichtenhouse, Mr. Snyder. I feel pretty good about this, you know? I, I mean, I wish we knew the ARPA money figure now. Obviously, that'd make it a lot easier, but I feel like the discussion that we're having here, I mean, I, I think if we keep pressing ourselves here, we could get down to, you know, what Mr. Lichtenhouse has suggested for a tax rate, or pretty close to it. And, you know, still do all the good things that we want to do and that we can do. You know, I, I spent a little time over the weekend looking back at budgeting 10 years ago, and let me tell you, those were, those were some grim times, you know? We were, we would lay people off, we'd frozen pay, we, you know, worried about our reserves, assessments had gone down. I mean, compared to those times, the situation that we face now is, well, it's just much more upbeat, because we did make the effort and the tough calls to do the economic development that's providing the kind of revenue that we hoped that it would, as Mr. Lichtenhouse points out. So I don't know, I would ask everyone to, you know, let's apply ourselves to this for the next week or 10 days. I know it's been hard on staff, and see if we can, you know, give the taxpayer a seat at the table that makes him and her feel that, you know, we're addressing all the needs of the city and doing, doing so in a, in a good way.
All right. Thank you. Any last comments? It is approaching midnight, and probably time to wrap up our conversation tonight. Any last words? All right, let's move on to business not on the agenda. Any standing regional committees, council member comments, any miscellaneous discussion? Any final words from anyone, other than let's adjourn?
Good night.
All right. Thank you, council.